This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FS.
This meeting of the Eau Claire City Council has come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Beaton.
Here.
Bergy.
Here.
Christopherson.
Here.
Emmanuel.
Here.
Gregert.
Here.
Strobel.
Here.
Weld.
Here.
Worthman.
Here.
Jean.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to our Monday, August 13th, City Council meeting. Just want to start with a few welcoming words, and if other council members want to say a few things as well, that would be wonderful. We're also going to go through the procedures in terms of documents and how to put your light on and all of those things as well. First, just a few welcoming words. As those at home and here in chamber can tell, tonight we bring you the City Council meeting from the County Courthouse here, which is the home of the Eau Claire County Board. First, I want to thank the County Board and the County Administration for letting us use this space over the next year as our City Hall is remodeled. I want to thank our City Manager, our City Staff for their hard work on helping us move into this new space, and this is coming amidst a time when they are moving as well to the north side, so I know this has been a lot of work. I want to also thank my council colleagues for your flexibility as we make this our home over the next year. Most of all, I wanted to assure all residents in our community that we will be open and accessible and aim to encourage everyone to show up over the next year to this new place. Your involvement, your thoughts and ideas are what we need to help us make the best decisions we possibly can. And so I want to make sure that everyone, while they are patient with us, that they know they are always welcome to come down here and to share their opinions, thoughts, and views. That's what makes us a strong community, and that's what we welcome. So, thank you. With that, I would like to open it up to other council members who may want to say a few words as well. Councilmember Emmanuel.
Thank you, Acting President. You don't need to touch your mic.
Yeah, so flash yellow, and then we'll go, let it flash yellow, and then it should turn, can you turn it right now? There you go.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I think it's a really important night and a special night to be somewhere for the first time. That's new for us and new for our community. And as I was thinking about just all of the newness, I'm struck by a conversation that I had with a community friend recently who said, "You have a lot of newness going on. What can I do to help?" And I thought about it, and I thought, you know, honestly, just being you is what we need. And so that's what I would ask of all of us, of ourselves as community residents and who happened to be elected, and to our community members who come out and engage with us and with staff as we wrestle with ideas and deal with boring stuff and then other stuff where we get all kind of riled up. With all of that, I ask that we just bring our best, because who we are as a whole person matters, and for some reason, all of us got plucked here together for the season. And so I would just invite us to not only bring our whole selves, but to feel good about who we are and what we have to contribute as a body and as colleagues together. So, welcome to everybody to our new space, and I look forward to it with you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Emmanuel. Thank you. Moving then, are there other council members that would like to share a few thoughts this evening? Seeing none, our next item, which is part of our welcoming and procedures, is our City Manager, Mr. Peters, is going to review all the things that we need to know in terms of our lights, how to request speaking turns, and the documents, et cetera. So I'll turn it over to him.
There it is. Ooh, it's on. Thank you, Vice President Worthman and Acting City Council President. The, I would also like to thank the county and the County Administrator and the County Board for using the space, and as has already been echoed, there's a lot of work that's gone into being here today. Valley Media Works has worked with us closely, as has staff at the county, but it's not going to go perfectly, all right? So there's going to be a couple of things that, you know, we're going to have to work through here. We have brand-new technology to work with. We've got a brand-new room, so it's really an opportunity for us to try some new things and demonstrate our flexibility, and so I'm looking forward to it. So just going through a couple of things. First, the seating. You all found your seat. That's a good thing. And so we're working on that with the name tags. We may move these chairs up front out. We'll have to see if that's problematic or not. The thought is that then the staff is sitting behind you, and then, of course, the public has the opportunity to be over there and back behind here. The, where presentations will be made is from this podium right up here. That would be stage left, or to our left, or to your right? And so that's where the presentations will be made. In terms of the discussions, there's a couple of different ways we could work this, but what we're going to try is to have the same process we used in the old chambers, but there'll be a couple nuances for you, which you've already bumped into tonight. If you look at your microphone, it should be flashing yellow. If it's not flashing yellow, then that means you've pushed the button and turned it off. So you want to make sure that it is flashing yellow, which essentially means that you're in standby mode. And it's muted, but it's in standby mode. If it's red, then that means it's hot and it's able to speak. So that is very similar to what we were used to in the old council chambers. So you want it to be flashing yellow, and then what will happen is you'll raise your hand or otherwise seek the attention of the chair. The chair would be recognizing you, at which point then Ms. Maroll will be turning your mic to its hot mode and, you know, live, so you'd be able to speak. So it will take just a little bit of time to, you know, to get smooth about that, but hopefully with some clear recognition of who's speaking next, then we'll get those mics turned on and off at the same time. So yellow light standby. You don't have to do anything to turn it to red, because that needs to be controlled up here by Ms. Maroll, at least in the system that is here. One other subtle difference is the document camera, which is the little platform that's to the left of the podium. Unlike our other facility where the document is always showing on the screen and Valley Media Works then chooses which camera to show live, in this case, that document camera is the same as the other cameras that show the people that are speaking. And so there'll be movement back and forth, and we won't always see the document, which is something that we're used to. But the document can be pulled up at any point in time, and we're asking staff to be very clear and enunciate when they're going to be moving to the document camera, and certainly to the extent that you want to see something that's on the document camera, you know, asking for it to be seen, you know, we can switch the cameras around and pull that up. Otherwise, things are pretty much the same. We still have the timer, and that will work the same way it did before. Voting will still operate the same way with a roll call vote that's called by Ms. Maroll. We do have other options for voting, but that would be something that if the council wanted to explore at another time, but we're trying to have the same procedures that we did before. And finally, at your tables, you have a water bottle, and so you have your nice Parks and Recreation water bottle. We will not be having the pitchers of water that you're used to, but you do have your water bottle, and there is either a sink in the back you can fill up with water, or outside, and to your right is the bath, are the bathrooms, as well as a drinking fountain that you'd be able to fill your water bottle up there. So that's all I had on kind of the mechanics of operating things, unless anybody had any questions.
Councilmember Beaton.
I was just wondering about when we're voting, if that is going to be recorded with our microphone so that folks at home can have an idea of what the vote comes out to be.
That's a, that's a good, good question, and I think, are we able to open all the mics at that point so that they can just go around and vote?
Yeah.
So that is something that we'll have to work with, so that I think when there's a vote, we'll be able to open all the mics up, and then people can just do the roll call vote, you know, because hopefully it won't be other disruption with, you know, people rustling papers or things like that. So if we're not able to, and of course, we're not doing any voting tonight, but we'll try to figure that out by tomorrow, so they'll all be open when you're doing the vote, and you'll just, you know, go through the procedure like you have in the past. Good question. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you, City Manager. So we, I will briefly welcome folks this evening to our public hearing. During its Monday night meetings, the Eau Claire City Council holds a public hearings and public discussions which give residents in our community a chance to weigh in on the important issues and decisions that we will be making at our legislative session tomorrow at 4:00 PM. I want to welcome everyone again to council chambers this evening, and thank Valley Media Works as well for live streaming these proceedings for folks who weren't able to be here this evening. To see that, please visit valleymediaworks.org. If you would like to address the council this evening, I will quickly review the protocol. Once an item has been introduced, staff, or in some cases, the City Council, will present on that item, and then following that, council will ask questions to help clarify, to help give us a better understanding of that issue. Then we will open it to public comment. When you approach the podium, please announce your name and address, and then share your comments. And here, we often will hold comments to five minutes, but if everyone has spoken already, you can come up to the microphone for a second turn to share further thoughts. Sometimes council members may ask a follow-up question, and that's a chance to clarify more for council. So please stay at the podium for just a few seconds, just to see if there are questions from council. Lastly, if you do not wish to speak this evening at the podium, you can still fill out a comment form, which is at the back of the room, and those then get distributed to the City Council the following day. We get those comments, and it's very important for our decision-making process. So either way you want to do it is fine. With that introduction, we will go then to our first order of business, which is item number one, street improvements. This is a public hearing regarding the proposed street and utility improvements on Country Club Lane, Altoona Avenue West to the cul-de-sac, 18013. Mr. Solberg is here with the presentation. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. This project, or this hearing is a public hearing for a portion of Country Club Lane, and I have a map showing the location of the overall project. Should I switch it? So Country Club Lane in Altoona. Here's Highland Avenue. The green portion is the City of Eau Claire. The red portion is the City of Altoona. The portion of Country Club Lane that is the subject of the hearing tonight is the portion that lies within the City of Eau Claire and contains five city properties. It leaves this part of Eau Claire and then accesses parts throughout via the City of Altoona. The City of Altoona is constructing the project. They are the lead agency for this, and at the previous council meetings, an intergovernmental agreement was approved to pay for, the City of Eau Claire would pay for the portion of Country Club Lane that would be the city's responsibility within our corporate limits. The hearing tonight is for special assessments that would be levied, as are levied against our normal construction projects. So with that, it's Country Club Lane from Altoona Avenue West to the cul-de-sac. It is, the utilities date to the late 1960s, and the pavement is dates to 1970. There was a chip seal on the pavement in 2008. What the project proposes is to reconstruct the tangent portion of Country Club Lane to 40 feet, and then it has a cul-de-sac on the end of it that would be reconstructed to the existing dimensions that lie currently. The existing water main is six-inch cast-iron pipe. Our current design standards are eight-inch ductile iron, so the water main will be replaced with new ductile iron water main. The sanitary sewer will be replaced with new eight-inch PVC sanitary sewer, and a new three-inch driving surface and curb and gutter will be placed. The other portions of Country Club Lane and the other existing portions in street sections in that neighborhood do not have sidewalks existing currently. The City of Altoona approved their portion of the project without sidewalks. For that reason, in lack of connectivity, the cul-de-sac for the City of Eau Claire in this engineering report is proposed without sidewalk. However, the approaches for the driveways will be constructed in a manner that if sidewalk is included in the future, it could be placed at the lowest cost and disruption to the property owners in the future. Construction is scheduled for next spring to summer. With that, I'll take any questions.
Mr. Solberg, do council members have questions on this project? Seeing none. Thank you. Next on our agenda is, oh, my body. Are folks here this evening specifically to speak on the street improvement on Country Club Lane? Seeing none. Item number two, our public hearing on sidewalk repair regarding cities intention to order the repair of sidewalks in curb and gutter sections according to Section 660907 of Wisconsin statutes at 38 locations, beginning with 1219 State Street Parcel Number 03149. Mr. Solberg?
The public hearing for the city citywide sidewalk and curb and gutter project is precipitated on our locations that we get over the past year on a complaint basis. So the sections, the sidewalk sections that are contained in this project this year, they're all sidewalk. There aren't curb and gutter this year that are included, have been reported to the city with having trip hazards and trip concerns. So our staff goes out and investigates those, and if it is found to be a noncompliant section of sidewalk, or in some instances, there are some gaps in our sidewalk section that have been called to our attention, they're included in this contract, and then we have a single contractor that goes throughout the city to make the repairs or the installations. Property owners do have 20 days from the time the resolution is approved, granting this project move forward with the special assessments, to make the repairs themselves. If the repairs are not made on their own accord within that time period, then the city will undertake the construction of the approved sidewalk. With that, I'll take any questions.
Councilmembers have questions? Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. Mr. Solberg, I know in the past, we probably talked about this, we don't have an ongoing program to sort of look at sidewalks for repair. We just do it based upon complaints at this point, and the reason I ask that question is, well, I don't know how many years ago, when I lived in the other house, and I had, I thought the city had a policy where they sort of went out and kind of kept the sidewalks in check, because there's probably a lot of them that people don't complain about that may be in sort of trip hazard or bad condition.
Yeah, we haven't, in the five years that I've been there, actively gone out and looked for those. If we have, property owners will sometime contact our forestry partners. If a tree is heaving it, then ask for the tree to be removed, and then our partners in forestry will say, you know, the sidewalk is heaved, and we'll receive some that way that are referred to us that aren't a specific complaint. But we haven't actively gone out and walked through the neighborhoods and looked for these. But if we do notice something that is a glaring concern, if we're driving, it's something that we would look to address. The library this year, you know, I think has a number of those. The library director has contacted us as well as we have seen to fix those, and it wasn't a specific individual complaint for that, but it was something that we were made aware of.
Strobel.
This is tongue-in-cheek, but if we wanted to amend this at all tomorrow for any particular individual property to put decorative pavers, could we?
If it is reported to us that there are decorative pavers that are presenting a trip hazard or an ADA hazard on a sidewalk, we would fix that also on here, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I'm wondering, how do we determine whether or not it's going to be replaced or ground, or at what time do you do some rut excavation?
Our, our contract is for replacement, so we will replace. The property owners will call us often. Usually, a third to a half will call and see what their options are, and oftentimes, they will look at having a mud jack option that's less costly, oftentimes less costly than a replacement, or sometimes different contractors will grind those. Our contract, to keep it consistent with the special assessments going throughout, we do a remove and replace, and then if a contract does come forward in the next few years where it's replaced under like a whole street reconstruction, then they're given a credit towards what they're paying currently for it.
At what point is there involvement of the tree? Is that anything that the sidewalk person might make a determination about?
Involvement if, like to have a tree removed, or...
Yeah, that there might be so much rut involvement that it would damage the tree or ask that the tree be removed.
So we do work with our partners over in forestry, and we purchased a tree spade, or an air spade, which helps blow some of the soil material away from the roots. So if there is a tree that a property owner would like to save, and we're replacing the sidewalk, you know, five years ago, the contractor would do, you know, basically hack out the roots that it took to get the sidewalk in, and then the tree would end up dying a few years later. So now our forestry department, or Forestry Division, does a very good job of working with the property owners, trying to surgically cut out the roots so they can save the trees. If the tree isn't able to be saved, or if the property owner doesn't want it, then they will remove the tree in, so we don't have a future problem with the sidewalk with this, so.
Thank you. Are there further questions from council? Mr. Solberg? Seeing none? Thank you. Are there members of the public this evening who would like to comment on this agenda item regarding sidewalk repair? Any members of the public here tonight? Seeing none. We will then move on to our public discussions. First up is regarding speed limits. Agenda item number three is a public discussion regarding ordinance amending Table 1 of the City Code of Ordinances entitled Speed Limits by Changing the Speed Limit on Harding Avenue. Mr. Solberg is here this evening regarding this as well.
Over the last year, we undertook some pretty significant community input with our Harding Avenue and Washington Street project that is under construction currently. When this project was approved by the City Council earlier this year, one of the components with the project that was proposed and approved was to reduce the speed limit in the shaded area from 35 miles an hour to 30 miles an hour. Bracket Avenue and Harding Avenue on top of the hill, and Harding and Washington Street at the bottom of the hill are 30 miles an hour. This middle section was 35 miles an hour. Speed studies at the time showed that 35 was the appropriate speed. Their speed study prior to the hearing this summer showed that it was the appropriate speed, but the project was approved with some physical changes of narrower lanes and speed reinforcement signs that made us more confident recommending lowering the speed limit to 30 miles an hour. So with that project being approved with 30 miles an hour speed limit, this discussion tonight is for the ordinance change that would need to accompany that project to make that, that speed limit sign, or speed limit be lowered for this. With that, I'll take any questions.
Are there questions? Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. I think we remember increasing this in the last two years, or am I thinking of something else?
When we went through, and it was about a year ago, we had a number of inconsistent speed limits throughout the city. So our transportation engineer, Ms. Ness, did a speed study at all of the locations. At that time, it was held the same. A number of speed limits we lowered, but this was in the ordinance book at 35, and so we kept it the same instead of lowering it. And then when we came forward with the project and worked with the communities, or the neighborhoods, that's where the proposal came to lower it at that point.
Thank you. Further question from Mr. Strobel? Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. Do we know what the history of that speed limit was, or when it was changed to 35, or why it was 35?
It would be my speculation that it would date back to when it was US Highway 12 and Business 12, and it was a legacy speed limit that was carried over. A lot of the design aspects where Rudolph Road came into Bracket Avenue, the configuration it was before we reconstructed in 2014 was from that project. So I think it was just a legacy carryover from that. I don't have the speed limit ordinance table directly in front of me that would show when it was last revised, that section, but it wasn't anything that we had a record that it was raised and then, you know, of city accord. I think we just inherited it.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Further questions from council? Seeing none? Thank you. Are there members of the public here this evening who would like to weigh in about the speed limit changes on Harding? No? Okay, we'll then close that agenda item and move to agenda item number four, which is a public discussion regarding the ordinance amending Table 9 of the City Code of Ordinances entitled Parking During Specified Hours by amending time restrictions in the historic Randall Park neighborhood and on Briggs Avenue. Mr. Solberg?
Okay, the historic Randall Park neighborhood, I'll go through that presentation first. We have been working with the historic Randall Park for a number of years on a number of efforts parking-related to provide some relief from the high levels of parking that are experienced during business hours in their neighborhood. And we, working with our parking committee and then ultimately going to their Neighborhood Association, I have a map showing one area that we wanted to try, providing some relief initially, and are you able to zoom in slightly on there? So the problem they have in the neighborhood, or that we're trying to address, is there are a large number of employees that are parking in the neighborhood, but the neighborhood also feels like there isn't adequate space, and there's some, some lack of safety with their streets because of the parking and some of the site distance. So currently, this is the area that we're focusing on with the discussion tonight. Grand Avenue's on the south. Fulton Street is north of it. The Mayo Campus is here. Currently, from Grand Avenue as you go to Mayo Hospital, these green sections are to our, existing to our parking. So basically, during business hours, nobody parks there, and the red is no parking allowed, period. So one issue that was raised working with the neighborhood is that this, the speeds are concerning going up and down Sixth Avenue, especially during the day. You have side streets heavily parked. You have very few people parking on Sixth Avenue coming from Grand Avenue heading to the Mayo Campus. So speeds were concerned, and then also the side streets on Union and Congress are fully parked, and they were seeking relief from that. So working with the Neighborhood Association and our Police Department... So working with the neighborhood association and our police department and engineering and community development was involved as well, we are proposing to have two-hour parking only on one side of Sixth Avenue. So there would be no restrictions on the west side and there'd be two-hour parking on the east side. And then previously, there were parking restrictions on these two blocks that needed enforcement. They are transferred over to Congress Street, which recently, or that doesn't have parking restrictions currently. And two more zones of two-hour parking were requested on Union Street. So we have a total of two additional block faces of parking restrictions in the area, but they're laid out in an easier fashion to enforce when you're looking down those. And having additional parkers on Sixth Avenue would serve as traffic calming for Sixth Avenue. And the hours currently for the parking restrictions in the neighborhood are 9:00 to 6:00, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Saturday, Monday through Saturday. And the proposed changes would go 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. So the combination of losing a day of parking enforcement and shifting those around would not result in an increase and actually should be a little bit of a decrease in resources necessary to enforce that. And our partners with the police department were in support of the ordinance change and the neighborhood association was also in support of the ordinance change. And it's before you tonight. If it's approved at the council meeting tomorrow, it would be signed hopefully as early as next week prior to students returning, and it would have a trial run this fall to see how this works and if that can, this strategy could be added to other parts of the neighborhood potentially in the future. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Do councilmembers have questions? Councilmember Brighley.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Did Mayo have any opinions on this or were they asked or just curious?
They're invited to the neighborhood association. When we have worked with Mayo in the past, they have always been supportive of changes that we've made, at least when we have verbal discussions, what, how supportive they are with their employees. I'm not aware, you know, if they tell their employees, "Park on campus, don't park on campus." But we do work with Mayo when we do parking changes in neighborhood and proposals, and we've looked at LPR, we've looked at other parking configurations through there, and they've always been supportive of our efforts to try and help with this. So they weren't a detracting opposition to this, so.
Thank you. Further questions from council on changes in parking? Councilmember Manwell.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I'm sure this has already been vetted, but just for my own peace of mind, has this had any adverse impact on emergency routes, although that's probably not the main way to go, but since it's so close to the hospital, are there any concerns about just response time?
I guess I didn't specifically take feedback from, you know, the response routes on Congress or Union. Sixth Avenue, I'm not sure is a major response route to the emergency room. Fifth Avenue, the parking doesn't change. On Congress Street and on Union Street now during the business hours during the day, instead of being fully parked, it's only, it should only be parked on half, even though it's two-hour parking on the other. So every place that we've had two-hour parking in the past, we haven't had a heavy density, so it would unclog the cross streets. And Sixth Avenue will have a few more people parking on there on the side that does not have restriction. There was previously no restriction here and two-hour parking, you know, on the other five faces, and now there'll be people parking on one side. But Sixth is a wider street than the side streets, so parking on one side is not a mobility concern that I have for there, so. I don't have any concerns with Fifth Avenue being the primary gateway from this area up to Mayo Hospital and through there, and that remains unchanged.
Thank you. Are there further questions? Mr. Solberg, I have a question. Just so I understand, essentially, the different folks that are being parking here are either students, people that are potentially working at the hospital, and then is the thinking here is that a lot of the two-hour parking are for people that are doing, say, a two-hour visit to the hospital? Is that primarily who's going to be utilizing?
The feedback that we, that I was involved with taking is that there are a few home-based businesses that the two-hour parking would provide time for customers to come in. There's somebody that did roofing so that you could come and you could park on the street. Property owners, if they're coming and going. Right now, we've taken feedback that sometimes driveways are parked in and they should be reporting that so they can get in, but it should keep that side of the street open if it's two-hour parking, so you wouldn't have, you'd have a less occurrence of driveways being parked in. But basically, the longer term, no restriction parking, which is unshaded in the diagram, would be the employees and students going to class or whatnot. The two-hour parking would be for property owners if they're, if they go to, you know, if they're employed part-time or if they go and they come, it would provide an opportunity on the block face to park where they wouldn't have to go into their, into their lots. I don't have a breakdown of how many business owners or how many just general residents or that is, but it's generally, half of it is available for employee parking, half of it's available for the residential use.
Makes sense. Thank you. Further questions from council? Seeing none? Appreciate it, Mr. Solberg. We will then open...
Would you like to talk about this or do you want me to go over the second one first?
Let's go over the second one as well.
Okay. The second parking restriction, the parking ordinance change that we have was brought to us with a petition, and it lies on the north side of Eau Claire, and I have a map showing the area. Seymour Road is here, maybe I'll turn it so north is up on your screen. And we have Seymour Road, the traffic signals on Hastings Way is where my pen is. Hastings Way goes north. Western Avenue is here. Briggs Avenue lies right here in this location. This area is a collection of streets that are very narrow, anywhere from 30 to 32 feet wide. There aren't parking restrictions currently on the streets, other than there are some parking restrictions out on Western Avenue. We received a petition of six property owners with regards to Briggs Avenue requesting parking restrictions on the east side of Briggs Avenue to have two-hour parking from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And for a closer view of Briggs Avenue, the petitions originated, the petition signers are in this area, but cars are parking, employees are parking on both sides of Briggs Avenue currently. It's 30 feet wide, there are sidewalks on both sides, but it is having some of the same issues that Randall Park is having in the previous discussion with a narrow street having employees parked long-term on both sides, making it difficult for the residents to pull out of their driveways. It was reported to us that this employer here has, you know, upwards of 350 employees that oftentimes are required to come to their campus. They have very limited parking on site. Their property lines are the red that you see here. The street is narrow as well in front and doesn't, obviously does not provide anywhere near enough parking for that number of employees. So their employees park on Briggs and they walk to the business. You received a letter earlier today from the business here explaining that they're not in support of parking restrictions. The petition did request the parking restrictions 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. And we worked with our police department, and this would be an area of increased enforcement that we don't have currently. The two-hour parking would cause, would be a resource requirement that would be necessary to add the enforcement. Feedback from the police department would be favorable towards either no parking change or switching the parking restrictions from two-hour parking on the east side of Briggs Avenue to no parking on the west side. And the west side of Briggs Avenue would be the side that would be adjacent to the, or that would encompass the driveways that you see here, and it would allow parking on the east side, but for safety reasons and ease, or to lessen the enforcement burden, no parking on the side with the driveways would be a safety improvement along that side. The resolution before you is written in the same language that we received the petition, and that is to provide two-hour parking along the east side of Briggs Avenue. With that, I will take any questions, I guess, on this one as well before.
Councilmember Gregory has a question.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Mr. Solberg, I was looking around in this area of town on my Google Street View, and I noticed that B&amp;B Electric is the business of, that's impacting the neighborhood with employees parking. And there on the corner of Western and Tobin Street, and on Google Street View, I see quite a number of vehicles that are related to that business parked over the public sidewalk and then also have even some trailers over the public sidewalk. And so obviously, there's some parking concerns that are maybe in general in that neighborhood. So I guess what I was wondering is, have there been communication with the business outside of this particular proposal to try to find appropriate places for parking vehicles and also for trailers associated with the business? And also, like, how would you see the parking restrictions impacting other neighboring streets?
This area, to be honest with you, and this is a blown, is a view further out with Western Avenue with the parking restrictions along here for different parking restrictions. And Western Avenue is 36 feet wide face to face for Collector Road, which is a little bit narrow when it gets people parked on both sides. It is a little bit tight with the number of trucks that come in and out of there. You have a large number of businesses over here, and if you drive up any one of these streets, there are people parked everywhere. I mean, it's obvious that there is a parking, it's very tight for the number of employees that are there to find parking spaces. If we, if parking's restricted in this location, they will, the company will, or the employees will need to find someplace for their employees to park. Typically, if it, you know, you park further out and you walk a little bit further. They don't have a lot of options over here. What I could see potentially, you know, if they have to go across the highway, you know, up at Seymour, and if there is parking available in this location. From what I see, this is a frontage road with the red that's only 21 feet wide that goes along Hastings Way, and there is no parking allowed there because you cannot park anywhere other than the travelway when it's that narrow. So this isn't an option until such time as it's reconstructed, and maybe that's reconstructed wider to provide parking for some of the businesses that are down here. But for 350 employees, they have parking on site for maybe 10 or 15, I would say, between customers and employees are, they're very tight in their location, so that requires them to park in the neighborhood. It's a, it's a difficult situation there. I mean, there isn't vacant land on their site to develop a parking lot. There's a small little area owned by adjacent property owner here that could possibly be developed, but it's, it wouldn't, it wouldn't provide the same parking that's given on Briggs, so. Yeah, I've seen the pictures of the vehicles parked on the sidewalk, and we encourage people, if they see vehicles or any obstructions on the sidewalks, to call because it's not consistent with our ordinances for that. I don't know if that answered your question or...
Yeah, I think so for now.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Next question, I believe Councilmember Beaton has a question.
Thank you. Is there a, where's the closest transit stop to this?
There are transit stops on Western Avenue. I don't remember, I don't recall if it's like right here, right here, or right here, but Western Avenue is a transit corridor for us, so it is on, it is on a bus line. I'm not, if I had a map here, I could call those up.
Further questions? Councilmember Brighley.
I just want to make sure I understand what you said, if that's okay?
Yep.
So the petition, the residents wanted limited two-hour parking on the east side, just the opposite from the driveways. However, when you went, this is the part where I was confused, when you went by the police department, they said they didn't have resources to enforce that, and they recommended no parking on the west side?
No, they said, when we were working with them, that adding another area of two-hour parking is a resource, it does require resources to go into that. That is new above our baseline for enforcement, because with two-hour parking, you have to, you have to chalk it and then you have to come back and it's irregular, as opposed to no parking. So their preference would be to have no parking on one side, it would make it more enforceable or easier to enforce, or to have no parking changed at all, keep it the way it is.
Did it change sides or is it the same side?
And it changed sides also because it had a safety concern also. They felt that it would be safer to have no cars parked where the driveways come out as opposed to having them across. And the residents, from what the feedback that I had heard was, if they're on, if the parking prohibition is on the other side when they're backing out of their driveways, then it's a little bit easier because you don't have the car when you're at a narrow street to pull out, so.
Do you know what the, passing the question? Thanks. Did the residents, have they heard this other proposal by the recommendation by the police?
We have not, we have not had a, an open house for the residents or sent a mailing out. I guess I can't comment if our transportation engineer had conversations with specific property owners throughout the course of today, but we haven't mass notified everybody. We did send out mailing saying that this proposed change was going to be in effect for all of the residents, but that was to address the way the petition is, or the resolution is written, not a counter proposal, I guess, to have the parking on the other side of the street.
Okay. I can ask one more question. So what we, with no change is what we would vote on tomorrow is what the residents are, what they petitioned, but the police department says is hard for them, that's before the change, what they would recommend.
Correct. It would be more resource intensive.
Yep.
Yep.
Further questions? Councilmember Struble?
Thank you. The business owner, when they sent that email, I thought they suggested potentially signing, signing it across from the driveway, where they felt that that was a concern that the neighbors had, that the cars were across the driveways from them when they backed out. Is it possible to do something like that and then maybe even paint the white lines so they don't get too close to the driveways? Is that something that could be done?
That could be an option to be considered if they, it would really segment with the number of driveways there. It would really chop up, you probably would end up having about a single parking space on there with the number of driveways coming out, but it certainly would be an option over there. I think if you were, if you were to segment it like that, it would be, I think it would be easier and probably safer just to go with the no parking on the side with the driveways because you'd be affecting the least number of parking spaces that would be there, so.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. So I feel like I have to, in honor of Dave Dux, ask a question on his behalf since we're here tonight.
we're here tonight. How did we get in the position, it's a historical question, I should say, how did we get in the position where we have an employer with so many employees and such limited parking? Where did that happen? Because it seems like we're in a pickle. So how did that happen?
Yeah, I guess I can't comment on what the previous, you know, if B&amp;B has been here through its entirety. I know with an electrical contractor, and they stated in their letter that a number of their employees are out and about, so it's not a factory with 350 employees there all the time, but they did indicate that they have a number of employees that need to visit on occasion, or if there's a rainy day, or if they have to pick stuff up. I don't know if 20 years ago, there were five employees, and this was a good spot, and they were just that successful, and they liked where their location is. I think they recently remodeled, and it just grew like that. This is a pretty industrial area in here with a large number of, when you look at the footprint, a large number of buildings with a high square footage of enclosed space on their sites that, it's, I guess it's, you can kind of see accordingly, along here with this property, and this property, and here. I don't think that they would probably, if they were presented today, be able to reach the zoning requirements that they would have to have for parking. They've been here for, you know, longer than I've been around, or these properties have been, different standards at different times, and now we're trying to address it any way we can. I think at some point in the future, when we do look at that frontage road, when it needs to be reconstructed, it is a conversation that we should probably have, is that a space that we can provide some parking for some of the businesses in the area at that time? But currently, the way it is, it's a rural frontage road that we inherited when we got Hastings Way, it's 21 feet wide, and we can't serve that function in its current condition with that, so. It's tough, it's narrow streets, it's a lot of employees, it's residents that are not feeling that they have the full use of their street like they should. Employees want to get to their work, their employers want them to get there, so it's, this one's a little bit more difficult than the Randall Park one.
Do you, councilmembers, have any further questions? Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I can help answer a question from a previous councilmember regarding the transit stops. I was just looking at it, and there is a transit stop a block to the south, and these are long blocks, and then a block to the north of B&amp;B Electric, so it's, so we could potentially look at adding a stop in between. There's also a bike trail in there across Western Avenue.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Further questions? I have one, is Councilmember Bergy's lighters on? Did you have a question? Okay. Mr. Solberg, is there a way, I was looking on Google Maps at that frontage road, which you said is 21 feet across, is there a way that, is it because of our city code of ordinances that we couldn't have parking on one or both sides? I just wonder if we took away parking on one side of Briggs, if we might be able to put it on the one side of that frontage road?
Well, nationally, it's, the national standard is not to park in a parking thruway, so the pay, all of the pavement there is a traveled way, so if you're going to park, you're off onto, you know, a lawn boulevard area. And I know we do not, our ordinances do not allow for parking in like your front yard, and I don't know if the boulevard within the right-of-way would follow under that, but you would be wholly on the grass that's adjacent to that frontage road.
Right, okay. Thank you. Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I remember in the Randall Park proposal, there was some talk about having a, maybe like a parking pass, like a residential parking pass. Wondering if that wouldn't lend itself to a solution here, if there could be, I don't know, I'm just throwing out a number, 10%, 20% resident-only parking spots that could kind of bridge a gap until there's a long-term solution?
We did explore that, and parking permits, residential parking permits do require a lot of work on the enforcement end of things. We were trying to, when we were going down that path with the Randall Park neighborhood, we were working with LPR to see if that would help, and then a permit would be tied to your license plate or so forth, and then enforcement, you would be able to go up and down the streets at, you know, slightly slower than cruiser speed, and that would help with the enforcement for that. Our initial trial run with LPR was not successful for that, so we haven't explored permit parking anywhere else at this point until we're able to look at getting an LPR system. But just a residential parking permit pass, when we got into the, more of the details on how to enact it, and it was a lot more, there was a lot more to it than just hanging a tag on your back window or putting a sticker up for that. Would a single location like this, I think it would require a lot of, I guess number one is something that could work. Yeah, it could be something that would work, but it would, there's a lot of areas, there are many areas throughout the city that would be interested in that, but it would take a lot of effort in looking to see exactly what that permit would be, what the enforcement resources would need, because we don't want to, we try not to present stuff that is going to, you know, it's easy for us to go to a neighborhood and say, you know, we can restrict parking here or there, but then our partners in the police department have to go out and enforce it, so we always try to work with them to make sure that what we present is something that is, you know, enforceable with them, or if it's, you know, in this case with a petition, we try to present what a petition has, being responsive to the citizens. So, yes, it could, but our experience with going down the permit path in Randall Park is that there's a lot, a lot more to it than I thought going into it. It almost turns into a nebulous with, you know, is everybody in the city entitled to a permit on that street, or is it specific to that blockface? And every, when we redo a street, everybody's tax money goes into the, goes into paying for it, so you could have an unintended consequence of the employees here getting all the permits instead of the residents, if it has to be fair to everybody, and then the enforcement. So it's something that, if it was examined, it has to be very thoroughly examined and really understood all of the different outcomes for it, so.
Thank you. Further questions from council this evening? Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Are there members of the public here this evening to give testimony on these two parking during specified hours amendments, both historic Randall Park and on Briggs Avenue? Welcome.
Thank you. Acting President Worthman, members of the City Council, my name's Bruce King, I reside at 1216 Briggs Avenue. I'll try to walk you through the neighborhood. I think I can answer some of, not all of, your questions, at least I'm going to try. The reason, and there are several reasons this was brought up, and Councilmember Grandit has it dead-on, especially on Tobin. The employees take up both sides of the street, they usually have work vans, trailers, one-ton trucks, they have Digger Derrick's, and they park on both sides of Tobin. Tobin is just as narrow as Briggs Avenue. If there is a delivery, be it UPS, or be it one of their contractors that comes in, or semi that comes in to offload, that street is shut down. If emergency vehicles need to get through there, and we've had emergency vehicles come through Briggs Avenue, we have, on our block, we have a wide range of ages, from senior citizens down to couples in their twenties and early thirties, but you can't get through there at all. On Briggs Avenue, you were talking about one side of the street versus the other. The reason we're looking at the parking restriction on the east side of Briggs Avenue mostly comes in the wintertime, when they try to plow that street. When they plow that street, they start on the house side, the western side of Briggs, and push the snow off to the east. Reason for that, and the map that you have in your packet, doesn't show the topography of Briggs Avenue. The south half of Briggs Avenue is flat. The part of Briggs Avenue where I and the other petitioners live not only goes slightly downhill, but it slants toward the homes. The only place on top of that little knoll that gets sunshine in the wintertime starts the freeze-thaw cycle. Being a former TV weather guy, I can tell you about the freeze-thaw cycle. What it does is it thaws, liquefies the snow, turns it into ice by the time it gets to my driveway. We've had more than a couple of instances where the city plow is going down the east, or going down the west side of Briggs, gets about to my house, and literally gets stuck with a big plow, with chains, and a full load of sand, because he can't get going, because he's now snagged his plow on the curb and can't back up. So if you are going to allow parking over on the east side of Briggs Avenue, they have no place to put the snow. A lot of the employees that work at B&amp;B come in from outside the city of Eau Claire, so they may not know the parking restrictions when there is snow falling. We've had a number of instances where cars are just left there for one and two and three weeks at a time, and it's not just B&amp;B. We have some college kids that live down the street that have three or four vehicles, some of those, I have one next door to me now, that's been sitting there for three weeks and hasn't moved. The street sweeper's got a nice track going around it. At the end of that block, down toward Peebles, we have a contractor there that has a two-and-a-half-ton truck, a work trailer, and three or four trucks. They are usually parked on both sides of Briggs Avenue down there, which makes it extremely difficult to get through there, because they're right in the end of a 90-degree corner at Peebles and Briggs. On the end of Peebles, the homeowner there has six vehicles sitting out in the street on both sides. And as Mr. Solberg mentioned, that's kind of tight on a narrow street. The one thing that we have looked at, and I have to thank Mr. Solberg for cleaning those pine trees up that's right across the house from us, they came in and did, and actually opened it up nicely, to clean out some of the pine trees, if you would just mow that side, if you just mow that side, so I don't have to go over and mow it. If you are going to allow parking over there, if you step out on the passenger side, you're going to step into three-foot of sandbars. That's what's over there. But I may have a solution for some of this parking that you've been talking about. If you look in the, Mr. Solberg's topographical map would look a little bit better, but can I borrow your map? I used to be pretty good with maps. All right, okay. Let me direct you right here, this is the grove of trees that I'm talking about. That looks a whole lot bigger than they actually are. Right here is a fire hydrant and a storm drain, there's one there, and there's one right across the street from it. Right behind this grove of trees is an open area, and right now, B&amp;B has four of their panel trucks sitting there, right on the edge of that corner, which if somebody comes ripping down that corner in the wintertime and misses the ability to turn, they're going to plow into them. They've been left there for a couple of years now, on and off, as employees move in and trailers are left there. But that is a relatively good-sized area that if somebody wanted to get in there with a bobcat and snag that out and throw a little crushed rock down, there's enough of a slope there, so any drainage would go toward that storm drain at the corner of Briggs and Tobin, which is something to think about. You know, we have no qualms at all against B&amp;B, we were extremely happy that they decided to go across the street, redo their storage building, and build a beautiful new structure over there. We just assumed they would try to move these seven or eight employees off our street. It is very, especially in the wintertime, it's very difficult to get out of my driveway to go uphill and try to turn at the same time, when there's a panel truck sitting in front of your yard, and a three-quarter-ton truck sitting right across from you, and it's difficult to get in and out, but it's also extremely difficult to see if there's a car coming up and down that street. We also have deliveries coming up and down Briggs Avenue, from semis to electrical contractors to UPS, FedEx, they're going, they start, even the garbage trucks have a hard time maneuvering through.
If I could just ask you to bring your comments to a close, because you're-
That's it, that's all I got.
Thanks for coming down, you can, if you have more to say too, we'll have another opportunity again.
Nope, that's all that we had.
Thank you, you're informative. We have a question here from Councilmember Emanuel for you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. King, good to see you.
Hi.
Wondering if you can remind us who owns that parcel of trees that you're referencing?
That would be, to my knowledge, it would be the city of Eau Claire. That would be, I believe that, and Dave, you can help me out on that, that is, I'm sure it's part of the right-of-way, many, many decades ago, there used to be houses right there before Business 53 became a four-line, because if you go on Briggs Avenue, there's still a number of curb cuts there, and the sidewalk is still there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions, Councilmember Bergy has a question for you as well.
Thank you, Mr. King. I was wondering what your thoughts are on the Eau Claire Police Department's idea of no parking on the others, the west side, because I don't think that was different than what you, what the residents proposed.
First I heard of it was here, about 10 minutes ago. So, yeah, I don't know if that's going to solve the problem. My concern was when, you know, we proposed having the parking restriction across the street, at least that would get the transient employees to come in, a lot of them take their tools with them in their vehicles, so to get the transient vehicle, people to come in, get their stuff, take off, that's kind of behind the two-hour, at least that was our understanding of it. But, you know, to do two hours over there, whether they can all come over on our side, that's not solving the problem. All that is, is making it more difficult for those of us that live there to try to get it in and out of our driveways. You know, I just got hit with this one time, when Mr. Solberg brought that up, so I, that's my best off-the-cuff answer.
Further questions for Mr. King this evening? Thank you, appreciate you coming down. Are there further questions or comments, folks here to speak about this issue?
My name is, I'm going to read from my notes, so pardon that, but my name is Jim Seymour. I reside at 621 Congress Street, and the issue I'm going to speak to is the Mayo Clinic area parking issue. I'm a member of the Steering Committee for the Historic Randall Park Neighborhood. I was appointed in the winter of 2015 to head the parking committee to address the parking situation in this area. I also serve on the Plan Commission for the City of Eau Claire, and I also did work on the 2015 Comprehensive Plan that talked about this issue a little bit. So, a little bit of history, and I'll try to be brief. I've lived on Congress Street since 1993, which is 25 years. When we moved into that house, it was a very quiet area with the mix of renters and owner-occupied homes. Over time, especially in the last 15 or so years, the neighborhood streets in this area have really essentially turned into a parking lot for the Luther Mayo employees, Monday through Friday. The weekends are fine, we don't have issues there. Somebody brought up earlier that it was, might be college students going to classes, that's not the case, just to clarify. It's pretty far from campus, and you're not going to see, you're not going to see students parking there and walking to campus. So the result of, the result for those of us who live in this area is we have a reduction in snow removal, street sweeping, and street maintenance, and really, it's kind of a fairness issue there. The plows try to come through and clean up, but what they, they go right down the middle of the street, because there's cars parked on both sides. middle of the street because there's cars parked on both sides. So over time, you get that icy buildup that Mr. King was talking about, and it's, it's really a hazard, and it, it's just, it doesn't work very well for the people that live there. It's difficult access for waste haulers, fire trucks, EMS service vehicles. It's difficult access for service and tradespeople when, if our homes need to be worked on, there's nowhere to park. That's kind of a pain. We have visibility and safety issues that Mr. Solberg touched on that are, are real issues that cause problems for us. If you're backing out of your driveway and you got cars parked right up to your driveway and cars parked across the street, it's, it's real hazardous to, to back out. And we get a lot of employees kind of surfing the area looking for a place to park, and a lot of times they're late or they're in a hurry, and that, that's not a fun thing to have happening. Yeah, so in it, the intersections are tough. We have, we did get some signage, I think it was in the spring, or maybe it was last fall, some setback signage that has helped some, but it hasn't, it hasn't rectified the situation. And oftentimes, our driveways have cars parked across them, either partially or fully. If, I've had to have cars towed out of the front of my house, and I know several of my neighbors have too. And it's just, when you got to leave, usually you need to be somewhere, and you, you don't want to wait for a tow truck. And that, you know, or they'll partially block your driveway, so you got to kind of get around them. Just a pain in the butt. The other issue that it creates is the, you know, the residents and guests, if you have guests over during the week, there's nowhere to park for them or for us, or, you know, it's just, it's just not a fair situation. And I'll add, the people from Mayo and Luther, they're all really good people. They're just doing what is easiest, which is parking closest to their place of employment. They're just doing what all humans do. But the result for us isn't always the, the best. And we did, in all our meetings, we did meet with, we did meet with the folks from Luther, Mayo, and, pardon me, they, they are fine with whatever we come up with, is what they told us. They don't have a problem with any restrictions or any, anything like that. I will, I do want to say, this all started back in 2015, which was right after the Comprehensive Plan was approved. And what's, what's identified in the Comprehensive Plan and in the Neighborhood Plan is that a parking permit program would be instituted in this area. So from 2015 to roughly 2017, we met with city staff, and we, we came up with plans, and we shot around ideas. And all of a sudden, abruptly, we were told by city staff that this was not going to happen, so kind of to forget about it. We were given some reasons, and some good ones. And that's fine, that's water under the bridge. So the parking committee kind of had to start over after a couple of years of working on this issue, and so-
Just anymore?
Yeah.
If I could ask you to kind of conclude your-
Yep, I'm just about there. So, so this plan that's before you tonight is kind of a Plan B that, that we came up with, and we met with city staff, and, and so this is where we're at, 39 months after we started this whole project. So I would just like to urge you to vote for this, and I think it's, it's not the, it's not the best solution, but it's, it, it will help alleviate some of the parking issues in our neighborhood, and I hope you vote for it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Just see if other councilmembers have questions for you this evening. I don't see any at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Are there further comments from those here this evening regarding these two parking-related issues? Further comments? I do not see any at this time. So on a motion then by Councilmember Strobel and seconded by Councilmember Anderson, motion has been made to convene, it's a motion to go into closed session regarding the potential sale of the Eau Claire Insurance Sports Center, which is permitted in closed session for competitive bargaining reasons pursuant to Statute 19.85, 1E of the Wisconsin statutes, and a further closed session item to discuss the terms and conditions of developing an agreement including potential acquisition of the property in Princeton Valley area, which is also permitted in closed session for competitive or bargaining reasons pursuant to Statute 19.85, Prime 1, Prime E of the Wisconsin statutes. If we could have a roll call to go into closed session. To the clerk.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
And that motion carries, and we are adjourned to closing.
The Eau Claire City Council meeting will return in a moment. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. We now return you to the Eau Claire City Council meeting.
This meeting of the Eau Claire City Council will come to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Beaton?
Here.
Bergy?
Here.
Christopherson?
Here.
Emanuel?
Here.
Gregert?
Here.
Strobel?
Here.
Weld?
Here.
Worthman?
Here.
Jean.
Thank you, City Clerk, and welcome everyone to this Tuesday session of the Eau Claire City Council, our legislative session. I want to welcome everyone to City Hall this afternoon, and thank Valley Media Works for live streaming these proceedings for folks who are not able to attend in person. If you can find, if you are able to, please find those at valleymediaworks.org. Would like to move to our first order of business, which is the Consent Agenda. Do councilmembers have any questions, ideas, thoughts, further clarification, potentially want to move any item on the Consent Agenda for a separate consideration? Seeing no such desire, the Consent Agenda has been moved by Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Anderson. Do we have any comments on that? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
And the Consent Agenda passes. Next up on our agenda is our first item of the Business Agenda regarding Festival in the Pines, Agenda Item Number 20. This item will have presentation first from Mr. Pipinger.
The special event application before you is a repeat event with changes. The 36th Annual Festival in the Pines is an annual event that has become an end-of-the-summer tradition in Eau Claire. This year's event will occur on Saturday, August 25th through Sunday, August 26th, and will take place in Carson Park. This year is a wine, new this year is a wine tasting tour in the park. And looking at the diagram, there's going to be four locations that will have some acts that will be playing at each location. One here is at the, the Horseshoe Lounge. Two will be at the, the Tennis Lounge. Three will be at the Arboretum Lounge, and number four area will be at the Schoolhouse Lounge. The Special Events Committee recommended approval of this event with conditions at their July 11th meeting. With the condition that we had was, there was another lounge that was going to be at the Chippewa Valley Railroad Museum, and our concern was that it was going to take people across the roadway that would be running. This event will require City Council approval due to the added wine tasting tour. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and also the applicant is here too to answer any questions.
Certainly. And questions from Mr. Pipinger, or the applicant on this item? Seeing none? Thank you. Then on a motion by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Weld, this item has been moved. Comments, concerns? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
And that item passes. Thank you. We're moving on now to item number 21, which is a resolution granting a temporary Class V fermented malt beverage, and temporary Class V wine license to Wisconsin, the country. Ruth Skeel is the president, and it's on, the event is on August 25th, August 26th at Carson Park for the Festival in the Pines. Ms. Stromberger, good evening.
Good evening, thank you. So this is a resolution approving five separate licenses, both for beer and wine. One is for the main concessions area near the entertainment and stage, and then four are for the wine walk locations that Mr. Pipinger just mentioned, and they're still up on the map there. So state law restricts an entity to two wine license typically in a 12-month period, and of course, we have five here for your consideration, but the exception in state law is for a wine walk. Municipalities can only make this exception twice a year. This would be the first exception that the city would be making in a year. At all licensed locations, beer and wine will be served by licensed bartenders. IDs will be checked on entry to each licensed area. Wristbands will be used for those of legal age. Service to those of legal age will be permitted only to those people, even if they're accompanied by a parent underage, service will not be permitted. And for the wine tour participants, will have to purchase a wristband, and only those with a wristband will be served.
Thank you. Are there questions from council, Ms. Stromberger? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I have two questions for you. Are you aware of any other potential applicants who might be seeking this this year?
The wine tour? We did actually ironically just get a call about one today, so we don't have an application in yet, but we do have an inquiry.
And the second is, does it calendar, per calendar year, is that January 1st to December 31st? Is that how that's defined?
It's actually a 12-month period.
Oh, so this triggers it now?
Yep.
I see. So now in the next, if this goes through tonight, now in the next 11 months?
We can only do one more.
Only do one?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Councilmember Gregert?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Ms. Stromberger, I was wondering how much alcohol one will be able to, to procure, I guess, with a wristband, and how much is the cost of a wristband again?
I'm not actually aware of those details, but the applicant is here, if you'd like to ask him.
Clerk, if you could come forward.
Hi, my name is Brad Windushausen with Festival in the Pines. Answer to your question, it is a $10 wristband, and I receive different trinkets with that, and then they have up to four samples they can get with that wristband.
Yeah, Acting President Worthman, thank you. Guess I was wondering, how large are these samples?
Usually four ounces that we pour for a wine sample. Even a wine glass would be four ounces.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions from council, for the applicant, or from Ms. Stromberger? Seeing none? Thank you. Then on a motion by Councilmember Beaton, seconded by Councilmember Jean, this item has been moved for action. Do I hear any comments? Seeing none at this time, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. We move then to item number 21, which is a grant regarding the Hometown Health Grant and accepting it. You will find at your desks a substitute resolution that makes a small edit to the wording, and that is in the be, be it further resolved clause, it adds an appropriation of $20,000 to that, so just as FYI, that's at your desks this evening. We have Ms. Adams here to give the details regarding this health grant. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. It does add in the wording appropriating in the resolution, initial resolution. But we received a grant from the Mayo Clinic Health System Hometown Grant for $20,000 that we applied for earlier this spring, and we would like to use that. It's designated for the McDonough Park Adult Active Aging Amenities at McDonough Park. The awards that Mayo usually gives out, the maximum award is $25,000, and we received $20,000.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Councilmembers have questions? Councilmember Strobel?
Yes, I just have a question. We don't, we don't generally appropriate in the same, in the same resolution. Is there a reason we're doing that tonight?
I think we usually do appropriate in the same resolution. It's the, the one from last council meeting for the fire, or the police department, the burn grant, that was the, the wording that I used to revise this resolution, accepting and appropriating the funds.
You have a follow-up, Councilmember Strobel?
Okay.
Are there further clarifications on this item? Seeing none? Thank you. We will move that item, and on a motion by Councilmember Gregert, seconded by Councilmember Bergy, this item is now open for discussion. Seeing none, hearing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember-
On the substitute, sorry, on substitute.
Councilmember Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. We move then to a series of bond sales. We're going to vote on each of these independently, as you will see there, there's about seven or eight coming up. This is initial resolution authorizing 2018 Series A General Obligation Bonds of the City of Eau Claire, Eau Claire and Chippewa Counties, Wisconsin, not to exceed $14,000. of Eau Claire, Eau Claire and Chippewa Counties, Wisconsin, not to exceed 14,000, sorry, 14,700,000 aggregate principal amount for the following purposes. And we're going to have a presentation from Mr. Windsands this evening regarding the following bond sale.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman, members of the City Council. If it's okay with you, I'd actually like to just do a single presentation on items twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, which are all initial resolutions related to, related to bond financing. So before you this evening are actually thirteen separate resolutions that relate to financing 2018 CIP projects. So as I mentioned before you, these bond sales are funding projects that were approved in 2018 and prior year CIPs. We only issue debt when we need to do so for cash flow purposes. We don't automatically, if a, you know, project is approved for a certain dollar amount, we don't run out and issue the debt, we only do so when we actually need to for cash flow purposes. The 2018 Capital Improvements Program that was approved by the City Council last year included $25.286 million in anticipated new debt. Before you this evening are resolutions totaling about $17.72 million in new debt plus refunding of $10,765,000. Refunding is simply another word for refinancing, where basically refinancing prior year's debt to obtain savings in interest costs. The initial resolutions before you this evening establish the maximum amount of debt that can be issued. It's entirely possible that when we actually go to sell the bonds, that the actual amount that we end up issuing may be less than the maximum amounts established here this evening. The bond issues are divided into three parts. We've got the Series 2018 A at $14.7 million. We've got 2018 B, which is about $6.5 million, and 2018 C at $7.27 million in debt. Contained within the 2018 A issue are several different projects. The 2018 bonds will be sold as 20-year tax-exempt general obligation bonds. What that means is the principal is amortized over 20 years, we pay it back over 20 years, and these are general obligation bonds, which means they're backed by the full faith and credit of the City of Eau Claire, and that, that the source of repayment for these bonds will be tax levy dollars. It will be levied against the property taxpayers of the community in order to make the principal and interest payments. Included within the 2018 A issue will be street improvements totaling a little bit over $5 million, bridge improvements at about $1.2 million, land buildings and equipment at $880,000, storm water improvements $795,000, water improvements $675,000, and then improvements within tax incremental districts number eight and number 10 totaling about $3.3 million. Also within 2018 A issue are improvements to Hobbs Ice Arena at $235,000, and then we're also refunding bonds that were issued in 2009 that were used to make various improvements to the Hobbs Ice Arena at that time. The interest rates on the 2018 A issue right now are estimated at 3.63%, which is up from last year, and which I would have expected because we are in a environment where interest rates are climbing. Moving on to the 2018 B issue, these will also be tax exempt, but they're called tax exempt notes. The difference between notes and bonds is notes have a maximum term of 10 years, but they're still backed by the full faith and credit of the City of Eau Claire and repaid through, through the property tax levy. Because they are a shorter term, they do tend to carry a little bit lower interest rate. Included within the 2018 B issue are street improvements, and are, which are the special assessment portion of our street improvements at about $1.6 million, land buildings and equipment at about $1.9 million, library improvements at about $90,000, and then we're also refunding some debt that was issued in 2008 at about $2.845 million. This refunding is being done for interest savings only, and the estimated interest savings is about $114,000 over the remaining life of that, of that issue. Interest rates on these promissory notes are estimated to be 3.13%. Finally, within the 2018 C issue, these will be 20-year taxable general obligation bonds. So again, amortized over 20 years, backed by the full faith and credit of the City of Eau Claire, but these bonds, the interest that accrues on these bonds to the purchasers of the bonds will be taxable as income on their property taxes. Therefore, you're going, as we'll get to in a moment, you'll see that the interest rates on these bonds are higher than those on the tax exempt bonds we talked about earlier. Included within the 2018 C issue are park improvements at $145,000, parking improvements, improvements to the Gibson Ramp at $980,000, funding for the redevelopment authority to continue property, or for property acquisition within the Canaria Redevelopment District, and refunding of 2008 C debt, again, being done for interest savings only, and the estimated interest savings on this, the remaining term of this debt is about $515,000. The interest rates on the 2018 C taxable bonds are estimated to be about 4.29%, so about a, about a percentage point higher than the, than the tax exempt debt. Just a couple reminders, usually there's, there, not usually, there is a fiscal, one fiscal year delay between when we issue this debt and when we start making payments. So we'll issue the debt in 2018, we'll make our first principal and interest payment in April of 2019, and then another interest payment in October of 2019. So there's always, we don't start making payments on these until 2019. At the time that the, that the 2018 through 2022 CIP was approved, or when last year's CIP was approved, tax levy supported debt service was estimated to be about $8.44 million in 2019. So when we, when we approved that CIP, I had put together projections of how much I thought our debt service was going to be in 2019 based upon the projects that were included in the CIP and certain assumptions. Similar discussion that we'll be having in a couple of weeks when the CIP comes back before the City Council for, for discussion. The 2019 tax-supported debt service is now estimated, estimated to be about $7.59 million, including the proposed borrowing. So where we had thought it was going to be about $8.4 million in debt service for 2019, based upon the amounts that we're actually borrowing and the interest rates, we're now estimating that it'll be $7.59 million in 2019, so about $900,000 less than what we had anticipated a year ago. The 2019 debt levy, including the borrowings that we're requesting approval for this evening, would actually decrease by $301,000 from the 2018 actual levy for debt service. So even though we're borrowing more money, because of the refundings we're doing, which are generating about $600,000 in principal and interest savings, as well as the debt that we're retiring or paying off this year, we're estimating that our debt levy will actually go down by about $300,000 next year. For the owner of that home assessed at $150,000, they would pay approximately $10 less in property taxes for debt service in 2019 than they paid in 2018. In terms of the next steps, the initial resolutions that are on your agenda this evening for adoption, as Acting President Worthman indicated, we will ask that each of these resolutions be approved by a separate vote, so unfortunately, 13 votes on, on these initial resolutions. The sale award is estimated at this time to occur on September 11th. That will, we, what we do is, these bonds are put out basically to bid. Interested parties are able to place bids on the bonds, and then we bring those bids back to the City Council to actually award the sale to the lowest bidder. We're projecting that that'll occur on September 11th. And then the closing date, which is when we actually receive the proceeds from the bond sale, we're estimating to occur in late September of this year. So with that, I would be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Windsands. Any questions from council? Councilmember Strobel?
Just one, after all that. Interest savings by refinancing is about $600,000, I thought you said?
Yeah, about 600, 600 and some odd thousand.
And you said the interest rates are actually going up on the new bonds compared to last year, but you must be able to refinance older bonds? It's still a lower rate than what the older bonds were, is that where the savings is coming in?
Exactly.
And then when you talked about extending those, you're, you said interest only, so the principal remains the same? You're not extending the amount of time that the payoff is on?
That's correct. We're not extending the term of that debt, we're just, we're just doing it for interest savings. The term stays the same.
Thank you. Further questions? For Mr. Windsands? Thank you. Then on a motion by Councilmember Bergy, seconded by Councilmember Christopherson, item number 23A, which is an initial resolution authorizing not to exceed 675,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds, the City of Eau Claire, Eau Claire and Chippewa Counties, Wisconsin, for the purpose of financing, acquisition, construction, and improvement of water system improvements. That has been moved. Is there discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
And that item, 23A, has been passed. We move then to 23B, which is an initial resolution authorizing not to exceed 795,000 aggregate principal amount, general obligation bonds of the City of Eau Claire, Eau Claire and Chippewa Counties, Wisconsin, for the purpose of financing, acquisition, and construction of improvements to storm water sewer in our city. That item will be moved on a motion by Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Anderson. Do I hear discussion? Seeing none at this time, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
And that passes. We move then to 23C, which is an initial resolution authorizing not to exceed 880,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds of the City of Eau Claire, Eau Claire and Chippewa Counties, Wisconsin, for the purpose of financing, acquisition, construction, improvement, repair, and replacement of fire station trucks and equipment. On a motion then by Councilmember Emmanuel, seconded by Councilmember Weld, this item has been moved. Is there discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
And item number 23C has been moved, has been passed. Item D is an initial resolution authorizing not to exceed 1,225,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds of the City of Eau Claire, Eau Claire and Chippewa Counties, Wisconsin, for the purpose of financing, acquisition, construction, and improvement of bridges. This item will be moved on a motion by Councilmember Beaton, seconded by Councilmember Jean. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
And 23D has passed. We move then to 23E, which is an initial resolution authorizing not to exceed 5,65,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds to the City of Eau Claire, of the City of Eau Claire, Eau Claire and Chippewa Counties, Wisconsin, for the purpose of financing, acquisition, construction, improvement of streets and street improvements, including lighting, signage, curbs, and gutters, and street lighting. That will be moved then on a motion by Councilmember Gregor, seconded by Councilmember Bergy. Is there discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
And 23D has passed. We move to 23F, which is an initial resolution authorizing not to exceed 3,295,000 aggregate principal amount of obligation bonds of the City of Eau Claire, Eau Claire and Chippewa Counties, Wisconsin, for the purpose of financing, acquisition, construction, and improvement of community development projects in tax increment financing districts. That will be moved on a motion by Councilmember Christopherson, seconded by Councilmember Strobel. Do I have discussion? Seeing none at this time, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. We move to item number 23G, which is an initial resolution authorizing not to exceed 235,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds of the City of Eau Claire, Eau Claire and Chippewa Counties, Wisconsin, for the purpose of financing, acquisition, construction, improvement of parks and public grounds, including ice arena improvements. That will be moved on a motion by Councilmember Anderson and Councilmember Emmanuel. Do we have discussion at this time? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
And that passes. We move then to item H, 23H, which is an initial resolution authorizing not to exceed 2,530,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds of the City of Eau Claire, Eau Claire, Chippewa Counties, and Chippewa County, Wisconsin, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding municipal obligations of the city and interest thereof. That resolution will be moved by Councilmembers Weld and Councilmember Beaton. Do we have discussion? Seeing none at this time, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
And 23H has passed.
We move then to item number 24, which is an initial resolution authorizing not to exceed 600, sorry, 6,515,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation promissory notes of the, of the City of Eau Claire, Eau Claire and Chippewa Counties, Wisconsin, for the purpose of financing, the acquisition, construction, improvement of improvements to public lands and buildings, including City Hall, City Laboratory in the city, and streets and street improvements, including lighting, signage, curbs, and gutters, and street lighting in[1764.54]
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregard.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregard.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
And that resolution passes. We move to item number 25, which is a resolution authorizing 2018 Series C taxable general obligation bonds of the City of Eau Claire and Chippewa Counties, Wisconsin, not to exceed 7,270,000 aggregate principal amounts for the following, and we'll vote on this separately. A is an initial resolution authorizing not to exceed 145,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds of the City of Eau Claire and Chippewa Counties, Wisconsin, for the purpose of financing, acquisition, construction, and improvements of parks and public grounds, including baseball stadium improvements. That resolution would be moved by Councilmember Bergy and Councilmember Christopherson. Is there discussion at this time? Seeing none from Council, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregard.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
And item number 25A, that resolution has passed. We move then to 25B, which is an initial resolution authorizing not to exceed 5,390,000 aggregate principal amount of obligation, general obligation bonds of the City of Eau Claire and Chippewa Counties, Wisconsin, for the purpose of financing, acquisition, construction, and improvements of parks and public grounds, including baseball stadium improvements. That resolution would be moved by Councilmember Bergy and Councilmember Christopherson. Is there discussion at this time? Seeing none from Council, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregard.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregard.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
And item number 25A, that resolution has passed. We move then to 25B, which is an initial resolution authorizing not to exceed 5,390,000 aggregate principal amount of obligation, general obligation bonds of the City of Eau Claire and Chippewa Counties, Wisconsin, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding municipal obligations of the city and interests thereof. This resolution will be moved by Councilmember Strobel and Councilmember Anderson. Is there discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregard.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregard.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
And item number 25D has passed. Item number 25C is an initial resolution authorizing not to exceed 980,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds of the City of Eau Claire, Chippewa County, and Eau Claire County, Wisconsin, for the purpose of financing, acquisition, construction, and improvements of parking facilities. On a motion by Councilmember Emanuel and seconded by Councilmember Weld, item number 25C has been moved. Is there discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Gregard.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
And item number 25D has passed. Item number 25C is an initial resolution authorizing not to exceed 980,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds of the City of Eau Claire, Chippewa County, and Eau Claire County, Wisconsin, for the purpose of financing, acquisition, construction, and improvements of parking facilities. On a motion by Councilmember Emanuel and seconded by Councilmember Weld, item number 25C has been moved. Is there discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Gregard.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
And that passes. We move then to item D, an initial resolution authorizing not to exceed 755,000 of aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds of the City of Eau Claire and Chippewa Counties, Wisconsin, for the purpose of financing redevelopment and urban renewal programs throughout our state. On a motion then by Councilmember Beaton, seconded by Councilmember Jean, this item has been moved. Do I have a discussion? Seeing none at this time, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emanuel.
Aye.
Gregard.
Aye.
And item number 25D has passed. We move then to Independence Park 8th Edition, which is number 26 on our agenda this evening, is a resolution approving the final plat for Independence Park 8th Edition, which is located on LaSalle Street between Gooder and East Princeton Avenue. This item, I should note, has been postponed from our July 24th City Council meeting, is taken out tonight, and we welcome Scott Howley for presentation.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman and members of the Council. Again, before you this afternoon is a resolution to approve the final plat for Independence Park 8th Edition, which includes 27 single-family lots, as seen on the map here before you. This item, again, was postponed from the previous Tuesday council meeting, on Tuesday, July 24th. I do want to give a little background, because since then, several staff, led by City Attorney Nick, and the developer, Mr. Hasselwander, and his engineer surveyor, Mr. Bohan, have worked diligently to address residents' interests in added parkland and amenities in and around Princeton Valley. What that looks like is before you hear. Result of their discussions and drawing.
Just came to the Plan Commission to share their concerns and feedback, and then before council. Uh, we did have a meeting for a information meeting for a neighborhood association, but that's kind of bigger than this part. At the meeting, I did just share an update. I didn't know much, um, but just that there was a closed session coming up the following week, um, to the meeting and someone asked if I knew where the parkland would be, and I said, no, I don't know if there would be parkland or not, and that was kind of the extent of that. Um, so I don't know if that really answered your question, but that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. Further, um, questions for Mr. Allen on this item regarding the, uh, item number twenty-six regarding the, um, final plat? Seeing none? Thank you for...
Thank you.
Then on a motion, this will be Councilmember Braggert, seconded by Councilmember Bergy. Uh, item number twenty-six has been moved. Uh, is there discussion on the side? Councilmember Strobel?
Hey, Jim. Very happy to support this. I, I think it, it gives us a lot of the housing that we need, and so the, that's worked out for the developer, and I, and I think the extensive work that, that staff has done in conjunction with council and, and the neighbors is, is a, a really good example of how when we work together, you know, we have a win-win for everybody here. I, I think the extensive plan that I saw with the trail that connects a lot of those different areas and future potential connections are, is, is gonna be really nice for that neighborhood, and, um, the fact that the developer donated land for, uh, some small parks, I think, is, is wonderful as well, so I'm enthusiastically supporting this.
Thank you, Councilmember Strobel. Further comments from council? Councilmember Braggert?
Uh, thank you, Acting President Worthman. I, I also feel that this was a good, uh, a good way for us to respond to, um, to a lot of the needs in that neighborhood, but also just, uh, you know, more short-term level, uh, as someone who served, who serves on Plan Commission and, and heard some of the initial feedback from neighbors, and then also on the council here, like, it really is a testament to, to what gets the attention of the city and also how responsive our, our staff can be at short notice, too, so I really appreciate all the work that has been done, and also really to the responsiveness of a, a developer who's been active in a particular neighborhood for a long time that probably had i- ideas that have bubbled up over time, and now it's time to put a lot of them together, so it's really exciting to see the connections to other, other parts of the community that this could, uh, lead to as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Braggert. Further comments? Councilmember Bergy?
I just wanna echo my peers and colleagues up here that I do appreciate all the time and effort from Mr. City Attorney. I know he worked hard, and other city staff, and Mr. Ha- Mr. Hasselwander and his team, the developers, and I just really appreciate that, being responsive to, um, put the neighborhood I was looking for, and so I just, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bergy. Further comments? Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. Um, echoing everyone else, uh, there's a lot of time and energy put into this, and I think that we, um, have a reasonable solution, um, to provide some green space for neighbors there. Um, I, I, I did wanna add that I wanted to thank, um, all the folks who came out, uh, to the Plan Commission meeting and to our council meeting to voice their concerns. Um, you know, it, it seems like a, a, a direct, uh, show of democracy on, on how a neighborhood can, um, can express, can communicate with their unit of government, and the government can respond, um, in an appropriate way, and so, um, I really wanna, uh, commend those folks who were here and, and spoke so strongly, um, in advocacy for themselves and their neighbors, um, because they made all the difference, too. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Further comments, uh, from council? Seeing none at this time. Clerk, please call a roll on item number twenty-six.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
And that passes. Uh, we move then to item number twenty-seven, which is a resolution authorizing the city manager, uh, to enter into a, into a development agreement with Hasselwander Brothers into the stormwater improvements within the final plat of Independence Park, Eighth Division. Again, this item had been postponed from our twenty-fourth, July twenty-fourth council meeting. Welcome, Mr. Jenska.
Uh, thank you. This is the development agreement for the plat that you just approved. The primary scope of the agreement is to modify the existing stormwater facility that's out there and the conveyance piping to accommodate, um, the plat, and primarily the work is gonna be to move the existing grading from, a little bit further from Gooder and LaSalle and move it back up closer to the power lines. Uh, that's the primary, uh, scope of it. It also includes provisions to dedicate the, the land that was just referenced, uh, in the previous presentation, to dedicate the, the two park parcels, to dedicate the easements for the trail system coming up to the facility, and then to construct the, and excuse me, I'm trying to do this with my left hand, what I normally would do with my right hand, to construct the trail from Gooder over to East Princeton. Um, and it has provisions for, uh, the maintenance of those facilities to get it, uh, Councilmember Emmanuel's question, um, once it's constructed. Um, the development agreement includes, as was presented in the closed session last night, uh, approximately fifteen thousand dollars for the city to contribute to the construction. The developer will be constructing the trail through the parts of the stormwater facility that would have been disturbed as part of the construction of regrading the pond, and the city will be constructing the elements of the trail to get from those disturbed areas out to East Princeton, primarily up here at the north end and then here at the east end, coming back into East Princeton and, and back to Gooder on the west side there. Um, the actual amount of that agreement will be based on the bids that are received for the project and then the actual construction quantities, so it's estimated not to exceed fifteen thousand. Could be a lot less. We're working through some design considerations that could lower the cost, depending upon how the bids come in, it might be a little bit higher than that. Um, the maintenance of this, um, generally the city would be doing the heavy lifting, so to speak. We would do the pipe repairs, the structure repairs. Um, there tends to be sediment that gets washed in off the city streets. We would remove the sediment from the facility. The developer, um, and Princeton Valley Golf Course then would be doing the landscaping, trying to keep a little closer in line to what the golf course might have compared to what we would do with our city stormwater facilities. Uh, they would be mowing the trail that goes through there, and, and I might point out that, uh, the scope of the trail right now is planned to be similar to Fairfax Park, so it'd be a grass trail, the trails that you see around the stormwater facilities there, basically an eight-foot grass trail with two foot on either side where the vegetation gets a little bit higher, and then you'd get into the, the slopes, either going down to the facility or up to the adjacent lots. So that's, that's the type of trail, that's why there would be mowing along with that. Calls for the developer to do the snow plowing on this, on the sidewalks adjacent to it in the winter, um, but it would call for the city if, and actually, the only place where that really applies is back to here where it's adjacent to Gooder Street. Uh, the developer will remove the snow. If that part of Gooder Street gets reconstructed, the city would be responsible for the assessments on that part of it. So that's, that's the gist of what the maintenance agreement does. The last element of it is sidewalks, and basically there's sidewalks all the way along Gooder, all the way along LaSalle, so the gap is to get from LaSalle on East Princeton up to the existing sidewalk, uh, from the condominiums up above there. The developer, at the time of the agreement, will build from the last lot under the power lines to make the connection. The rest of these sidewalks would be constructed at the time the individual homes are built on those lots. Now, the development agreement also has a provision that ten years, if they're not completed with ten years and those lots are still vacant, then the city can come back and order those sidewalks constructed and assess the property owner of record at the time to construct the sidewalks in. So that's how the gaps get filled in over time if the homes don't get built. So with that, I think that's pretty much everything I'd planned to say. If there's questions, I would be glad to answer them.
Certainly. Are there questions at this time from council? Councilmember Emmanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Um, so as we saw on that, um, the trail that was highlighted on the red marking...
Oops, let's get it right-side on.
Um, I'm asking this question in, in maybe some context of another inquiry that some council members got, not related to this whatsoever, but essentially on what to do if there's vacant land and there's weeds or grass that are longer than eight inches tall or something like that. So in, once this little path is, is carved out and people are walking and having a good old time, the area to, I guess, I don't know if that's the north, to the north of that trail, what happens if it's exceeding, I guess, acceptable limits of, of grass or weeds or things like that? Does that, is that a problem for this area? Is that something that, um, needs to be addressed? I guess, can you talk a little bit about that, 'cause I'm not sure how that part works?
Well, I'll take a shot. Uh, maybe the city attorney will wanna chime in at some point, um, and I would preface my comments with one man's rose is another man's weed, and...
Definitely.
And, you know, some of prairie plantings and, um, wildflower kind of things may look good to somebody, and they may not look good to another person. I suspect what you're talking about is the area between the stormwater facility and the driving range, um, what might happen there, or even what might happen within the stormwater facility. Um, it would be, it would be handled through our normal ordinance for any parcel that would have nuisance-type vegetation on it, of how we go about getting those, uh, cleaned up. I'm not entirely sure of the process that happens through our Community Services Department, um, and through our zoning inspection, through, um, community development. We don't really handle that much in engineering, so I'd be afraid whatever I tell you'd be wrong, um, but we would be envisioning at least in the lower part of this, something that looks fairly similar to Fairfax Park and that kind of vegetation. As you get up on top of the slopes, you're probably gonna see something very similar to the, um, the driving range. That's the reason that, uh, we entered into a maintenance agreement with the developer, so that, uh, the golf cour- the golf course was actually concerned about the, the level of maintenance that the city would do, because on most of our stormwater facilities that are just stormwater facilities and not a manicured park, so to speak, like mature playfield, um, we'll mow those maybe two times a year, and so they can get fairly long, but we try to keep those a little bit natural, uh, for reasons I described earlier. And, um, so, I've been saying a lot, did I get at your question?
I think so. I think if I can reflect back, um, there's mechanisms in place and have an open mind about what's beautiful and what's not in the world.
Yes, in so many ways.
Thank you, Councilmember Emmanuel. Are there further questions, clarifications? Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Uh, so does the, is the parkland dedication part of the development agreement? No?
Um, these two parks, yes, and I can point you to where they are in the development agreement. They'll be on page SC dash two, paragraph D, item five. And the easements to get, uh, from this facility to there are the item right above it, uh, bullet four.
Okay. I trust you. Ask another question?
What would the timeline be? I know we kinda went over it last night as well, but for the trail, from what I remember, it'll be sooner than later, as soon as the developer starts the construction of the final, or the plat, then he'll work on the, the trail?
Yeah, from the, from the time the developer signs this development agreement and brings it in and executed, which, you know, sometimes depends upon their financing or, or they see the market for selling their lots, sometimes they don't execute these right away. I have no reason to believe Mr. Hasselwander is going to delay, but, you know, things could change tomorrow economically, and, and they might, but once, once the agreement is signed, then there's a two-year window to finish the construction. Now, sometimes at the end of the two years, we revisit to see what's done, why delays are happening if it's not done, and then we'll extend it if there's reasons to do that. Um, this part of the trail will be constructed as part of that development agreement in that two-year window. Uh, we will have a financial guarantee. When he, when he executes the development agreement, he'll bring in a financial guarantee, which includes money to cover the construction of the trail, so that will be tied up either through a letter of credit or through an escrow with us, so we have a little bit of a handle on that. The timing on the rest of it, to get from here to there, um, I'm not sure. I would refer that to the city attorney and the negotiations he had. There's not a specific timeline in this agreement for that.
Okay.
City Attorney Nick?
Oh, shit. Okay. You're on. Power up. It'll be, uh, the improvements, uh, westerly of Gooder are city improvements to make, so the dedication is handled in the development agreement, the, either the easements or the parkland, but actually funding the improvements will be a financial decision, uh, for the city to make, so it is not in the current budget, and, uh, it, you know, remains to be seen based on your budgeting in November, whether and where it would land in the CIP.
Okay.
But those would be improvements, where the, the timing would be, uh, decisions for the city. Um, the first step would simply be, uh, moving forward with the terms that are in the development agreement, which would include the city surveying, uh, those properties and, and sort of, uh, implementing their transfer to city ownership, but in terms of them actually being built out, um, you're dependent upon, uh, funding by the city.
Thank you.
Are there, thank you, City Attorney Nick. Are there further questions, um, or clarification? Seeing none? Thank you, Mr. Jenska. Then on a motion, uh, this one will be by Councilmember Christopherson, uh, seconded by Councilmember Strobel. Um, item number twenty-six, sorry, twenty-seven has been moved. Are there comments on this item? Um, seeing none, I, I do wanna just, um, put in a word of thanks again, um, and reiterate what my, uh, council colleagues have said about, um, how big of a deal this is, that we've had, uh, really a whole number of, of people come together in different ways to work, work on a solution here, uh, from Mr. Hasselwander to the neighbors who got involved, to our city staff who worked tirelessly, uh, to figure out how to make this work, and to all of you as council members, um, for the job you did in facilitating a, a solution. And so, I just wanna say thank you. I think, you know, you look at a project like this and you realize that, uh, we're voting on, on this today, but it could be, um, over the next fifty years that, you know, kids are able to, to play on this playground and people are able to walk, you know, the, the families who are moving in today are gonna be able to walk their dogs and, and enjoy the outdoors and, um, and come back to the, the benefits of health and of creating community, uh, and, uh, meeting your neighbor and the importance of all of that. So I just wanna say thank you to you, uh, to our city staff for their incredible hard work, um, and to, to the neighbors and the developer and Mr. Hasselwander as well for coming together to find a solution. It's, it's, uh, absolutely incredible, so. Uh, on that, clerk, uh, further comments? Councilmember Bergy?
Is there one more? I just wanna give a thanks to the Plan Commission...
The Plan Commission.
'Cause they, they listened, when the residents showed up, um, and they listened and, um, had a lot of good discussion and really heard, and they kinda kept that, started the conversation, which landed in front of council, but wanted to give them kudos as well, so...
Absolutely. Thank you. Further comments, uh, by council? Councilmember Anderson?
I just wanna echo the, um, gratitude that has been expressed by council for, um, city staff, for, uh, the conversations with the developer, for the neighborhood, people who, uh, came in and made their voices heard. Um, I live right by Fairfax Park, which is really similar to this, and was created for kind of similar reasons, and it is the, um, uh, an incredible, um, heart for that neighborhood. Um, all kinds of people use it, um, kids from, uh, South Middle School come and do nature studies, there's all kinds of wildlife, it's just an absolutely fantastic place for people of all ages, and, um, every time I go, I'm grateful for the foresight of city leaders in the past, so hopefully, um, people, um, in Princeton Valley will get to have a similar experience. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none? Uh, clerk, please call a roll on item number twenty-seven.
Councilmember Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
And that item has passed on a ten-to-zero vote. Thank you. Uh, we move then to item number twenty-eight, which is regarding street improvements. Um, this is gonna be a resolution approving a project, levying special assessments for street and utility improvements on Country Club Lane, Altoona Ave, west to Culicac. We had a presentation last evening, uh, by Mr. Solberg. Are there any, uh, follow-up questions or clarifications that council has at this time on this item? Seeing none? Uh, then on a motion by Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Emmanuel, item number twenty-eight has been moved. Are there comments? On council, I see none at this time. Uh, clerk, please call a roll on, uh, item number twenty-eight.
Councilmember Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
And, uh, that street improvement has passed. Uh, we move then on to item number twenty-nine, which is regarding sidewalk repairs, uh, along, uh, resolution approving sidewalk repairs along section of, was, um, sorry, twelve-nineteen State Street, parcel number thirty, um, and this is according to section sixty-six oh-nine oh-seven of Wisconsin statutes. We had a presentation last evening on this, uh, specific item. Uh, Councilmember Emmanuel has further question?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I will be recusing myself from this item and I'll return to chambers after it's voted out.
Thank you. Uh, are there, uh, any further questions, uh, for, um, Mr. Solberg on this item this evening? Seeing none at this time. Then on a motion by Councilmember, uh, this will be Councilmember Weld, seconded by Councilmember Jean. Item number twenty-nine has been moved. Are there, and is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none? Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
And, uh, item number twenty-nine, resolution regarding repair of sidewalk, has, uh, has passed. Just wait a second for, um, Councilmember Emmanuel to, um, have some, could actually invite her back here. Thank you. Um, I think we will, um, I'll at least move on to and explain this next item, um, while we're joined by all of our council. Um, item number thirty is, is resolution approving appointments and reappointments to various boards, committees, and commissions. Uh, you will see in your packet, um, that, uh, this is regarding, uh, the, specifically the Transit Commission and the Waterways and Parks Commission. Um, we had, uh, a meeting, um, of the Advisory Committee on Appointments, uh, Tuesday, August seventh, and considered, um, a number of applicants. Um, you'll find in your packet, um, that our recommendation, uh, at this time, it was, Councilmember Beaton and myself, our recommendation, uh, was to, uh, appoint, a new appointment to the Transit Commission of Austin, Northig, and, and, uh, that was recommended by our, um, student body government, uh, as, as, uh, as someone that would have to consider to be the student representative on the Transit Commission. Uh, that would be for a one-year term to expire August thirty-first of next year. Um, the other recommendation you will find in your packet, uh, from the Appointments Committee, is regarding, um, the Waterways and Parks Commission, this is appointment for an unexpired three-year term to expire December thirty-first of twenty-twenty, and that, uh, recommendation from the Appointments Committee, uh, is Mr. John Bodkin. Um, we, um, I suppose, I'm not entirely sure if there's questions or comments regarding this, but, um, probably our next, uh, our next action would be to move this item, uh, on a motion by Councilmember Braggert, seconded by Councilmember Bergy. Um, there are comments or thoughts? Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. Um, the Waterways and Parks Commission, was that a, a reappointment, a new appointment, filling an expired term, or, or what, do you remember?
Um, actually, I believe it was a, um, I believe it was an appointment to fill, uh, a term of someone who had left, Jason Duba, uh, and so we were filling that, new appointment.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions by council? Um, seeing none at this time. On these two appointments, both Transit and, uh, Waterways and Parks, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
And that passes, and congratulations to, um, Mr. Northig and, uh, Mr. Bodkin for your appointments to respective committees. Moving on to item number thirty-one, uh, which is consideration of appointments of council members to various boards, committees, and commissions. Uh, and this item, uh, is being brought to you, um, I'll just give a little background, but essentially, um, as, uh, Acting President, um, there are a number of boards, committees, and commissions that, um, are expected to, to be filled and, and that, um, I had been made aware of to, to serve on, um, and I've actually found that, uh, it, in terms of the time and all the different demands that are there, um, that it, um, I, I think it would be, um, great to sort of open up that opportunity to other council members, um, if they so wish to serve, uh, in my place, um, just given, uh, full schedule. So, um, this evening, uh, we're gonna be, um, discussing, um, DEKI and, um, looking at, uh, filling the position there, and also on the Chippewa-O'Clare Metropolitan Planning Organization Council. Um, and so, this is gonna be filled similar to how we've done other, uh, appointments to boards, committees, and commissions amongst ourselves. Uh, I think we will, um, open up to, um, nominations, um, of fellow council members, and, uh, and then fill in the, um, the blanks that you see here in the, in the resolution. Um, we have to move this before we do that, probably. Okay. So, um, before we, when you go, I think we'll move this on a, uh, motion by, uh, Councilmember Bergy and seconded by Councilmember Christopherson, um, which is item number thirty-one. Um, are there questions, clarifying questions, um, of council regarding this item? Uh, did you have something? Councilmember? Councilmember Strobel?
Uh, maybe you could say when and how often these committees meet?
Um, I'm waiting, I'm waiting, just one more. Okay. I'm not sure about that. Uh, I think Councilmember, um, Emmanuel may have that answer.
Um, thank you so much. Um, I think the city staff for helping to prepare this, they do have the meetings listed in our packets on page, uh, one fifty-three and one fifty-four, and it looks like the NPO meets quarterly, so looking at, for the rest of this year would be August twenty-ninth, we haven't made it there yet, uh, October third, and then it looks like there will be a meeting in February. October third, and then it looks like there will be a meeting in February and May, and I suspect that this appointment is only until the council president election. So this is really filling out just the remainder of this year's term, and this would be determined next April accordingly. And then for DEKI, it's the first Wednesday of the month.
It's a monthly meeting. Thank you, Councilmember Emmanuel. Further comments or questions by council? Seeing none. Are there nominations at this time, or would anyone like to nominate themselves for any of these positions? Councilmember Beaton?
I'd like to nominate myself for the DEKI position.
Further nominations? Councilmember Gregert?
Acting President Worthman, I'd like to nominate myself for the Metropolitan Planning Organization Council.
Are there further nominations on the floor at this time? Councilmember Emmanuel?
Thank you, Acting President. I would like to also put my name forth for DEKI as well.
So Councilmember Emmanuel has put her name in for DEKI at this time. Further nominations self or for fellow council members? I see none. I believe the way, if I could ask for clarification or help on how, what the best way we will vote on this, how we will vote on this? City Attorney Nick? Sorry, City Attorney Nick, my apologies.
I think you have one nominated party for the Metropolitan Planning. I think a voice vote would be in order. And then on DEKI, typically you've opened up an opportunity for the nominees to speak, and then following that, a show of hands vote to see who has the six-vote majority required, and then those gaps would be filled and you'd go back and take a vote on the resolution itself.
Okay. Let's start then with, thank you, City Attorney Nick, let's start then with a voice vote on, is it actually, I'll ask one more time, is there further nominations for the Metropolitan Planning Organization? Seeing none. Councilmember Gregert has put his name in, and do we unanimously approve the council member to that position? All say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, hearing none. Councilmember Gregert will be entered as the name on that one. Then on the other appointment, which is to DEKI, I would like to ask one more time if council would like to appoint anyone else, or if someone would like to appoint themselves, sorry, have themselves considered for that, for that position. Seeing none at this time. I will then open up the floor to Councilmember, suppose whoever wants to go first, to speak about their qualifications and why they would like to serve on DEKI.
I can go first.
Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. I have been, well, I'll start from the beginning. I had worked for a downtown business for a number of years, five years, throughout college and after college, and this business was very engaged in the culture of downtown and as well as DEKI, and so I feel in that experience I have a lot of understanding, firsthand understanding of how the downtown works, as well as how the downtown DEKI board works. But more recently, I've been working directly with a couple of Board of Directors on various projects that they're interested in relating to downtown artwork and community artwork, and they, they've actually asked me to start attending their open meetings, just to listen to the conversation and see, you know, where I can be helpful. And so I hadn't intended on attending these meetings by their request anyway. And so I think that because of my recent involvement with their projects and with other projects with DEKI, not relating to art, I think that I could be of good service to this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Councilmember Emmanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman, and thank you to my colleague, Councilmember Beaton. I think of two, I like to think, good choices this evening. So when I look at downtown O'Clare and really our greater community, I think this is a game-changer year. We have a pretty significant opening happening in a few weeks downtown with some subsequent development and growth that's going to be occurring. And I would like to help lend some of my experience as a bridge for the next, I don't know, eight months or so between now and whenever this seat would end, in looking at a major transition for Visit O'Clare moving downtown, and I'm working significantly with them on that, looking at new businesses that are looking to come downtown, as well as options to help remedy some of our affordable housing challenges that we're looking at. I have worked significantly with some of the major actors in downtown O'Clare Inc. already, and I feel like I could hit the ground running as well with some of the relationships and the initiatives that they're looking for. And what else would I like to say? I think it dovetails as well with some of the work with the Redevelopment Authority and some of that. So really what I see is a different type of bridge leadership. I mean, they're both bridges, so you don't have a bad choice. You have, you know, like I said, two good choices, but really perhaps a different pathway of getting there for that bridge leadership.
Thank you, Councilmember Emmanuel. Are there further comments by council regarding these two choices? Seeing none at this time. I think we're going to do a raise of hands, we'll do it in order of seniority. And so Councilmember Emmanuel, all those who would like to see Councilmember Emmanuel serve on DEKI, please raise your hand. All those who would like to see Councilmember Beaton, please raise your hand. Okay. I think what we'll do is, thank you, thank you for voting. I think what we'll do is open up to another opportunity for both of you to speak, to your qualifications. It's normally how we've done this, so I'll ask Councilmember Beaton to speak again if she would like, or, yeah.
I don't know that I have much more to say. I guess I, I'll just reiterate that I intend to, intend to attend at least some of their open meetings anyway, and so whether that means it would be better to have two councilmembers there than one, or if that means we want to consolidate our time, I think, I agree that I think that we have two really good options, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Emmanuel, do you want to say further?
I don't really have anything further, but if I was looking at a strategy of, you know, what's more strategic, I don't, I don't know that if we have this decision again in April, and again, who knows what's going to happen, but if we had this decision again in April, then I would put my name forth again. So I really do see this as a little bit of a gap leadership offer that I'm making. So like Councilmember Beaton said, could have two people there. Also, if she was appointed, I could go, so, and we wouldn't have form issues, so if it's just two people, so.
Okay. Councilmember Strobel?
I have a question. Maybe the candidates could tell us the other committees they serve on currently as well? Maybe that would be helpful to those people.
Since you all serve on a lot of committees, can you remember those?
Yeah. I serve on the Waterways and Parks Committee, Commission, that it meets once a month. And then the Appointments Committee and the Visit O'Clare Grants Committee both meet pretty irregularly. Appointments is whenever it is needed, and then the Visit O'Clare Grants Committee is twice a year.
Councilmember Emmanuel?
I serve on the Visit O'Clare Board of Directors, and I also chair the Destination Development Committee for Visit O'Clare, looking at significant opportunities for us to really enhance and create destinations within our community. And then I also serve on the Redevelopment Authority. I intentionally did not seek service in some other areas, just to make sure I could scale back and be available if something additional were to come open. So those are the places that I serve, and I think that they do dovetail very nicely with the work that DEKI is doing.
Thank you. Are there further comments, either from those nominated or from fellow councilmembers? Seeing none at this time. We're going to go through another round of raising your hand voting, and we'll start again with Councilmember Emmanuel. All those in favor of seeing her serve on DEKI, raise your hand. All those in favor of Councilmember Beaton, please raise your hand. Okay? I believe we have another five-five vote at this time. Do both of those nominated wish to continue voting, wish to say something further? How would, how would you like to do this?
I can withdraw my name and then come as a deputy.
Okay. Council, Councilmember Beaton, I believe, I tried to turn your mic and it didn't work this time, so, but I believe you had requested that your name be withdrawn for consideration this time. Okay. So thank you for that. Thank you for a good discussion, both at willingness to serve this important commission. So given that Councilmember Beaton has withdrawn her name, it would then be up to all of us to approve Councilmember Emmanuel to fill that vacancy, and I will ask on a voice vote, all those in favor of appointing Councilmember Emmanuel to DEKI Board at this time, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, hearing none, no such desire, no such vote. Councilmember Emmanuel's name has been entered, and we will then move to the, and thank you again for both, both Councilmember Gregert and Councilmember Emmanuel, and Councilmember Beaton for stepping forward to serve. Item number thirty-one has now had those names, Councilmembers' names filled in. Do we have further discussion one last time on the entire resolution? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emmanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
And that passes. Congratulations to both Councilmember Gregert and Councilmember Emmanuel for your appointment. We then move on to item number thirty-two, which is an ordinance regarding zoning, and this is regarding properties of the northeast corner of LaSalle Street and Gutter Street from P-one to R-one. You will recall this item was postponed from our July twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen City Council meeting, this parcel. Mr. Scott Allen is here. If there are further questions or clarifications, or do you have a presentation, Sealy?
I do not, Acting President Worthman, other than to say that, do you want to respond to one question that was raised at the last meeting, and that was whether any other privately held land was zoned, P-public zoning? Staff did do a cursory search and identified no other properties, noted as such, so just wanted to add that clarification. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there further questions from council at this time? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then on a motion by Councilmember, this would be Councilmember Bergy and seconded by Councilmember Christopherson, item number thirty-two, the zoning ordinance has been moved. Are there, is there a discussion at this time? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Christopherson.
Aye.
Emmanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
And that ordinance, number thirty-two, has passed. We move then to item number thirty-three, which is regarding speed limits. This is an ordinance, amending table one of the City Code. The ordinance is entitled "Speed Limits" by changing the speed limit on Harding Avenue. And we had a presentation last night by Mr. Solberg. Is there any questions, further clarification questions for Mr. Solberg at this time? Seeing none. Then on a motion by Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Anderson, this ordinance regarding speed limits has been moved. Is there comments from council? I see none. Sorry, Councilmember Gregert.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I certainly feel that this is a necessary change in the speed limit for Harding Avenue. I look down on the third ward and walk it and bike up that hill and down that hill pretty often, and I would say that the speed limit is something that I think, you know, if we were to lower traffic speeds, and I think some of the infrastructure and changes that we're doing will be able to do that, you know, I think, I think it's a necessary move, and I also, you know, led a few walking tours of that corridor over the last few years when Brackett Avenue was being discussed, as well as when Harding Avenue was being discussed a year ago, and those were, I think, eye-opening for folks in the neighborhoods who joined, as well as fellow councilmembers who were able to join, and then for staff to be able to interact with the, with the experience of that hill. And obviously, I think in the long term, we need to do, to do more to accommodate people walking and biking, but there's also, you know, some safety concerns for vehicles too, and turning to Jefferson, and so I think this can help alleviate, you know, some of that and create some consistency with the, with the speed limit as well, because it's kind of odd to have it go from thirty to thirty-five to thirty in such a short span of distance, as well as within the center of the city like that. I think we need to, if anything, create some consistency, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregert. Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. I also wanted to express my appreciation that this is before us, I think I've said this before this body before, but I, I have, being somebody who's been involved in a bicycle auto accident on this road, I think that there's a lot of room for safety improvement. I, if I'm remembering correctly, I voted to lower the speed limit originally, I think, two years ago, and so I'm really glad that we're taking this step, and I hope it passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Further comments from council? Seeing none at this time. We are going to vote on this ordinance regarding speed limits on Harding Avenue. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emmanuel.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
And that ordinance passes, ten to zero. We move then to ordinance regarding parking, and we had had a discussion last night on this. It's item number thirty-four. Amending table nine of the City Code of Ordinance is entitled "Parking During Specified Hours" by amending time restrictions in historic Randall Neighborhood Park and on Briggs Avenue. So if you'll remember, these are two very distinct, separate items. We had a presentation last evening, but if there are further comments or questions for Mr. Solberg at this time, the floor is yours. Councilmember Bergy?
I did have, if Mr. Solberg could come up and update, I think he found out more information. That will be quite helpful for the problem solving, so I'm sure that, thanks.
Thank you. During the discussion last night, it was raised by a property owner along Briggs Avenue that there might be an opportunity to make better use of the land east of Briggs Avenue. So I did some looking this morning when we were in the office, and at our contours, and the right-of-way, Hastings Way is right here, again, north is to the top of the screen. I just roughed in, you know, a very basic forty parking stall, parking lot, and we would be able to fit parking in this area that is currently right-of-way. If we worked with the state of Wisconsin, who owns the right-of-way that underlies Hastings Way, worked with them for a partial vacation, I Way, worked with them for a partial vacation, I contacted the business who has been indicated that many of their employees, many of their up to 350 employees have parked in the Briggs Avenue area, as well as on-street on Tobin. They would be interested if this land was available and constructing a parking lot at that location, that would provide adequate off-street parking for a number of their employees that are currently causing the problems on Briggs, which resulted in the petition that resulted in the ordinance, proposed ordinance change. I did ask the business if we were to help, if the city were to help with the, facilitate the land transfer from the State of Wisconsin through the partial vacation, if they would consider allowing the use of this parking lot as kind of a dual-use in the evening and on weekends for trail users that would use the Old Abe Trail that is at this location here. They would be open to that suggestion, so in addition to providing parking for the employees during the day, a parking lot could provide trail user parking in the evening. So this appears like it could be something that the business could undertake, and they seem to be willing to undertake, that would help alleviate some of the parking on Briggs Avenue.
Thank you. I see further questions from councilmember.
Thank you. Thank you for working on this and for hearing suggestions from the public. This is an unexpected but really exciting solution. I'm wondering if you anticipate a need for any parking changes on the street if a parking lot was built? I know that there are concerns about extra enforcement in an area that we don't enforce for parking.
Well, we would, if the business were to undertake the expense to build a parking lot, it would be expected that they would encourage their employees to use the parking lot. So at that point, you know, this wouldn't go through the process and be constructed until next year. There just wouldn't be time for the vacation and the land transfer. So, but once it's constructed, I would be reasonably confident that this would satisfy the parking that is being undertaken in this area. And this was just, I just kind of picked a number 40 cars to approximate what would be on the one side of Briggs Avenue. It fits, the property goes down to here, so there's probably room for additional parking above and beyond the 40 in there. So I think this would go a long way to alleviating some of the concerns that the neighbors had on Briggs Avenue. What to do in the meantime, from now until the parking lot would be active, would be a discussion or consideration for the council to consider, because nothing would change out there until the parking lot is constructed. I looked at the petition for contact information for the residents to see, is this something that you feel is important to undertake now, or would you be already waiting until, you know, next summer, giving the, that a parking lot could be in the works? And I was not, I didn't have email information or phone information that I was able to secure to ask them. I did talk to the speaker that spoke in support of the ordinance change last night, who lives at this location here, and he was very supportive of the idea of a parking lot being located across the street. Current site plan requirements would require screening, there are currently trees here, so if a parking lot was located, the tree, it could be shifted to either save the trees or provide alternate screening if the trees are not young, if they're more mature, and there is an opportunity on the backside to plant additional trees to replace that. So, at least with the one speaker that was here, it seemed like it was a positive possibility. As far as timeframe, I don't have a gauge from now until next summer.
Further comments, questions, Councilmember Weld?
Thank you, Acting President, I just wonder if we should separate these two items?
Sure.
They had the discussion on the one and vote, and then come back to this item?
Yeah. Do we have further questions for Mr. Solberg about this Briggs Avenue? Councilmember Gregor?
I'm wondering if it would be possible if we, you know, I understand that this resolution would make it the two-hour parking, which is what the community members wanted but was challenging for police enforcement. I'm wondering if it would be possible if we did make this, you know, two-hour parking, then to somehow revisit this if a parking lot is constructed and that need for two-hour parking goes away?
That would definitely be, if there was an ordinance change enacted to put parking restrictions on Briggs, we would then put it on our radar, and when we come through with our semi-annual parking ordinance changes, we would look to remove it at that point in the future if there is support for that. So that's one option, and the other option is to have no changes and see if the parking lot is followed through on, and if it's not, enact them, you know, next summer, if there's no progress on it. So that would be a decision for council to consider.
Thank you. Councilmember Gregor has a question as well.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman, and thank you, Mr. Solberg, for looking at this creatively. Though I'm not necessarily like a big fan of building more parking lots in town, there are certainly some areas that are, there are some acute, you know, problems, especially when you have a neighborhood directly adjacent to an industrial area like that. I guess my question was mostly about the screening for something like this, where, like I would, I would tend to prefer to have the trees kept, although I haven't gone to actually look at them yet. But generally, mature trees, I would prefer, is there a way to add screening within or below, like some of the, some mature trees that you could envision, and also would there be screening on the highway side as well to, so that when you're on the road, you're not looking at a parking lot either?
There definitely would be opportunity for, you know, pine trees to be replanted along the backside of it, that would provide some screening, some deciduous trees, you know, potentially as well, that would provide a canopy, possibly along and behind the row of parking on there. It wouldn't provide screening during the winter time, but, you know, perhaps, you know, mountains of snow would provide the same thing. With the trees, if they're a higher canopy, I'm sure that there would be shrub, lower light shrub varieties, that would be possible to find for in there. I'm not sure what the light levels are in there, if, basically, if you have a pine tree with a canopy up, starting at eight to 10 feet, you're probably fairly well-lit for daylight underneath it, and, you know, pretty much any kind of shrub variety would grow there. So I think there would be the opportunity to try and offer suggestions during the site plan approval process on what would be an appropriate screening that would be appropriate for that location.
Mr. Solberg, is it your recommendation that if we do enact some sort of change on the parking to the street, that instead of the two-hour, it'd be sort of like all or nothing, one side or the other? Because that was one of the recommendations brought up last night, is that enforcing a two-hour parking is difficult, but saying no parking, all of one side, is that a recommendation?
I would say from an engineering standpoint, and then weighing in with enforcement, if there were a parking change that were to be made on Briggs Avenue, I think, safety-wise, it's always safer if you have a number of driveway accesses, if you don't have parking along those, it provides better visibility. So I would be in concurrence with the police department's recommendation that if there was a change made out here, to go with the west side of Briggs Avenue, from, for the same hour, seven to four, Monday through Friday, to go with no parking where the driveways are, and then not have any parking restrictions on the east side where the petition references, that doesn't help the snow removal concerns and the melt and freeze thaw that were raised yesterday. I know if we have a snow emergency, then there is alternate side parking, and, you know, hopefully that snow would be clear. I'm not sure if these trees weigh into that as well with the freeze thaw, so, but from a straight safety standpoint, and then throwing, considering in enforcement resources necessary, if it was purely no parking, you're not re-chalking the tires, you can drive through, you can visually see if there's nobody parking during those hours, and it would make enforcement easier. So if there was a change made at this time, I would be in agreement with that recommendation from our police department.
Further questions from council, from Mr. Solberg? Seeing none, thank you. Then unless there's opposition to it, I want to, Councilmember Weld's suggestion, take these items separately, which would mean that it would be a motion from Councilmember, I forgot where we were at, go with Councilmember Weld, seconded by Councilmember Beaton, to move the ordinances, the ordinance amending the specified hours on Historic Randal Park first, that, we'll move that, if there's any comments, suggestions, ideas, thoughts, motions on that specifically, you know, the floor. Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll. On amending time restrictions in Historic Randal Park Neighborhood Association, Councilmember Emanuel actually has a comment. Sorry.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. That's my fault, I was thinking there's comments about moving them, so I'm, that's my fault. I just wanted to say, I get a kick out of people who care so much about our community, and I want to give some thanks to Mr. Seymour, who came down and spoke last night. What, one thing he didn't tell you in all his notes is that we chat every now and then, and I saw him a couple of years ago for something, and I said, "Well, what's new and exciting in your world? Where are you involved in?" And he's like, "I'm working on parking stuff in Randal Park Neighborhood." I'm like, "Seriously? You are excited about this? Because he really cares about it." And that's what we need in this community, we need people who take a project, who are willing to invest their time on it, and then kind of work with some of the obstacles or changes that come up in the way, and he shared that this isn't necessarily Plan A or the most dreamy solution, however, it's better than what has been there before. So I really appreciate just that passion, and I honor the work that it's taken for him and the time that it takes away from his family as he gets involved with passionate parking issues, so. I'm a nerd for this stuff, I think it's great, and I really just appreciate him and the leadership from other community folks to work on a solution here.
Thank you, Councilmember Emanuel, for that, and further comments, Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I really appreciated also the comments that were made last night in support of the parking issues and the work that went into that, and I'm not exactly sure where this comment would live, but I know that Mayo has plenty of available parking in the lots, and I think it's convenient for employees to park in the neighborhood faster to get where you're going, the entrance that you're using, but I'm wondering if we could kind of monitor or check back with the neighborhood to see what kind of satisfaction they have, and see if Mayo really might consider more strongly encouraging their employees to use the lots. They provided shuttles from the more distant, so I think that we could move for a better collaboration if we so desire, so I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I can say that my sense is, and Councilmember Emanuel could probably second this, that Mr. Seymour and folks in that neighborhood are very, they're very involved, and hopefully if things aren't going well, I'm certain that they will reach out. They're a very involved group, and it's helpful to have neighbors like them that are keeping an eye on these things, so. We'll take this, as I said again, we'll take this item separately, if there's further comments from council on this item, we're going to do a vote on the restrictions in Historic Randal Park around parking. So seeing no further comments at this time, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that ordinance passes. We're going to take up the second part of this, which is the, amending the restrictions of parking on Briggs Avenue as initiated by the petition request from the neighbors. Are there further comments, thoughts, ideas on how we might want to take this up at this time? Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Well, I have been thinking about this, I made actually a lovely decision tree, and so I'm just going to put this out there, there's kind of three options, the way I'm thinking of it, and I really would like to hear my colleagues' ideas too, but the way I see it is we could leave it as, with no restrictions, parking restrictions, and just knowing that the parking lot would probably be built in the next nine months or so. Otherwise, if we put restrictions on now, and then, then we'd have to decide if it'd be, no parking, I think my idea is get away from the two-hour, in respect with the Oak Creek Police Department was saying with their resources, that made a lot of sense. So either no parking on the west side, which is what the police department and city staff would like, or no parking on the east side is what the residents that he wanted originally, and the petition said. And then the third option is we could do no restrictions tonight, however, do a stipulation that the lot, if there is no lot by a certain date, like June 1 of 2019, that we will need to put restrictions down. So that's what I'm thinking, what I drew out here, so.
That helps get the conversation started. Councilmember Strobel?
I wonder, procedural on some of those options, would we, would we move this down? Would we postpone it to a time soon, so these things could get done? Or how would we proceed on some of those options that she laid out?
I'll ask City Attorney Nick to speak on it.
I think it depends, you know, which of the options you want to pursue, but at least a couple of them would be available for you this evening, so taking action on, if you have to amend to go from a two-hour proposal to an absolute prohibition on parking, and then pick your side. So all those are amendments that you can do this evening, and that's properly in front of you. And then the final option, you could do two things, I mean, it's a long postponement, but, you know, you can simply postpone this, but it's probably longer than I would recommend, and instead you just, you know, direct staff to keep an eye on it with that very indication of a date of, you know, to return this to council in, you know, the summer of 2019, you know, if there isn't a private parking lot constructed in approximately that location configuration, something like that.
City Attorney? Councilmember Strobel will follow?
Clarification on the last option, so we would just, could potentially, no, if we wanted nothing, with giving, in giving direction to staff to follow up on it, or something like that?
Right, or a motion to table, but no works as well, that defeats it, or postpone indefinitely, excuse me, table is usually used within the meeting, so postponing indefinitely would mean it simply wouldn't come back within the session, which we usually consider sort of April to April, or about one year, but any of those work, and again, I don't think there's anything parliamentally incorrect about a postponement until next July, it's longer than what you typically do. Usually that's something like, you know, within a few weeks to a few months, but your preference?
Thank you. Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Thank you for the decision tree, I love that. I was also kind of thinking like, we had like this Price is Right stage, you know, yeah, option one, option two, so that's really cool, thank you, Emily. Excuse me, Councilmember Bergy. I guess my preference is let's, let's signal if the council is interested in doing this, let's signal to the neighborhood that we're with them and finding a long-term parking solution, that we got to make this better, and if I were to put my little Plinko chip, it would be in option B on the decision tree, in that it's signaling that, look, in the long term, we'd like to have this parking lot constructed, however, winter's coming, like it or not, it'll be here soon enough, and just to give that relief in the winter time. It's not the perfect solution, but it is a bridge solution, and I'll share why I think that's important. When I came home from council last night... When I came home from council last night, my husband asked about, you know, "Oh, how did things go? And anything like really controversial?" And I said, "Oh, no, but there's like a really hard decision to make." Because you have, essentially, you have to choose between displaced parking spots for employees, and people need their jobs, and need to be able to get to and from their workplace, and then also the quality of life for residents and having access to their home. And so, I really thought a lot about this last night and thought, "Well, for me, where's the right side to err on? And for me, it's with the residents." You know, everybody has their long days, and I think at the end of the day, everybody deserves to come home and have a little bit more peace, and just not worry about having some of those contrictions that were explained last night. So, I, and I, especially with winter coming, living in a neighborhood that has benefited from the alternative street parking when needed, it's been so helpful. And I can say that's improved my quality of life. So, I think moving the, restricting the parking opposite side of the homes, and moving towards that parking lot, I think is a good solution. And then, for that six-month review, as Mr. Solberg explained, once, if a parking lot is created, then we could just take that parking restriction off for both sides and just restrict it to the parking lot.
Thank you, Councilmember Emmanuel. Further, Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Acting Christopherson. I, I agree with Councilmember Emmanuel. I, I would like to align with the residents as much as we can, choose the side that they have said works best based on the light and shade during winter, and because it will suit the demands on police to have it be no parking instead of two, two-hour parking. But I, I think this long-term solution is far better than anything that we had on the table originally. So, my, my suggestion would be no parking on the east side.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Further thoughts? Councilmember Strobel.
I wasn't paying attention, but has, has this one been moved? I think we should move Briggs.
You're, Councilmember Strobel, you're moving. Councilmember Anderson, seconding. Thank you. Did you have further comments, too, Councilmember Strobel, on this?
Based on, sort of what I heard, I, I think I would probably either go to postpone indefinitely or, or, or maybe table it, but, and I'll tell you why. I went out there and I did talk to the business owner, and talked to him, I became aware of this option later on in the day, actually. He, he was very excited about that. It's a, it's a growing business. He, not only does he have the, the offices there on Western Ave, but across the street, he's got warehouses and stuff as well, where they ship from, and, and so there's quite a few people around there, and it's very limited for parking around there. So, I think, I think this offers a, a great solution for the neighbors, and, and he was very enthusiastic about the ability here, and he would absolutely make his people park in the parking lot. Very happy about that. So, I think what, what happens also is if we do restrict it here, those six cars, because there was only six cars there, and he said those are the same cars that are there every time, they would probably end up having to park on Western Ave or someplace like that, where I think it's busier, and I think it's more of a hazard for people. I mean, they have to go someplace. He doesn't really have the room there, so I, I would caution, and I guess, I would hope that the neighbors would be really happy about this solution, and maybe they could just put up with it for another year. But I don't like necessarily putting parking restrictions on if, if maybe they're going to become unnecessary. And then the other part of that is I think we're really lucky, we're, we're, Mr. Solberg found us, there's a, a very mature row of evergreen trees right there, that are just a perfect screening for that parking lot right now. And so, I, I do think this is a really nice solution. So, I guess I would, they have to park someplace for right now, and if we had to postpone to talk to the residents and see if they're okay with it, I'd even be okay doing that and coming back in two weeks, but that's where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Are you making a motion to postpone for two weeks?
I did not.
Okay. Councilmember Weld.
Thank you, Acting President. I would be in favor of a short postponement. I think it's difficult for us to discuss the future without really nothing secured as far as an agreement from, you know, the business owner, and, you know, clarification from the state, and whether or not this is actually going to happen for sure, or whether or not that can happen in 30 days, I don't know, but, but maybe the staff does. But if, if we can't do a short-term postponement, then I would prefer to at least take some action on the street. I agree, I think we owe the neighborhood a, a quality of life that all of us hope for, and, and most of us are able to enjoy. And unfortunately, they, it's been a, you know, a burden for them, and a burden for the business, too. And I, I, I wish I could speak on both sides, and, but I, I guess I feel if we're not going to make a decision on this lot this year and soon, then, then we need to take some action. I don't know if I'm in favor of the east side or not. I, I'd rather see parking on the east side versus the west, but that's up for discussion.
Are you making a?
I will make a motion to postpone.
Okay. For, for two months?
Two months.
We have a, we have a motion to postpone.
Sixty days?
Sixty, for sixty days on the table. Councilmember Emmanuel.
If that's been seconded, then I can, I can second it to make sure it's on the floor. We can, we can still amend. I just wanted to check with our city engineer to see if that seems feasible, and if not, then perhaps the mover would be open to changing that.
Okay.
Sixty days seems reasonable. What will happen is we will prepare a, a request for DOT for access right-of-way and for a partial vacation. And by the time it gets reviewed by the office in Madison, and it will have to be reviewed by, or the office in Eau Claire, and then it will have to be reviewed by Madison, two months is probably a pretty safe bet. I don't know that we would have an answer back that DOT would be certain that they would be relinquishing their rights to it. I don't see any issue. We've had a number of these in the past with the DOT, and they've been relinquished, but to have us, have a certain answer from DOT, I would say two months would be the timeframe that we'd be looking for.
Councilmember Emmanuel.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. So, let's say two months comes, now we're in the beginning of November, it's cold, ground's starting to get cold. Is that too cold to get any signage in the ground if, and only if parking restrictions were to be enforced? And maybe you can change the signs for those pretty tight.
It'd be, I wish I was a former weather personality like I spoke last night. I'd only be 50/50. Sometimes November's cold, sometimes it's not. The first council meetings in November, it's, I think we would be able to get them, the frost usually isn't that deep in, in early November, as opposed if it was December or January. So, I think we probably would be pretty safe getting them in barring a, a foot of snow on Halloween, which I'm not forecasting at all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And if, if I could ask the motioners if we could amend this to, say, the first meeting in October instead of sixty days?
Sixty days. October 21.
Twenty-two and twenty-three, I take.
So, the second meeting in October? Okay. Second meeting in? Okay. So, motion is on the table. Councilmember Weld and Councilmember Emmanuel to postpone this till the second meeting in October for further consideration. Do we have comments on that motion? Councilmember Bergy.
Acting President Worthman, I would, would the, the residents be contacted during that time? Would that be possible? To get their feedback on this?
I believe so. I'll defer to.
No, it wasn't necessarily contacted, though, but.
Or update.
We, we would be able to send a, just a, this map that we have here out to the affected parties that we sent a notification of the hearing last, or the public discussion last night, too. So, that wouldn't be an issue, just saying that this is something that is being considered for your area. It'll be before the council in October again, similar to the, the way we give notice for other discussions with us.
City Attorney Nick.
Just a point of inquiry, maybe clarification from the mover in second on the postponement, especially given that question, do you want the postponement to be to your legislative session? That's the, you know, the standard answer once it's before you as a legislative matter. But if you want it for a Monday public discussion again, let us know, and know that in your postponement, because otherwise, we'll just bring it back.
Legislative session.
Just legislative session.
Councilmember Emmanuel.
Thank you. Acting President Worthman, my only concern is if we only bring it back to the legislative session, then we might unintentionally leave out opportunity for public comment on the Monday night.
We should bring the deadline, is that two to Tuesday? It would still be the Monday night discussion?
Go ahead.
Yes, let's get that clarified.
No, that's what I mean, that, that was the, the question.
Yep.
Because typically, when you take a postponement action, it returns exactly in the form when you've postponed it, which is in front of you as a legislative matter. You've already held your discussions, you don't need to do another one. But if you want to have another one, let us know. So, that's what I'm just asking you. You want it as a postpone to the first Monday, and note that you're going to have a discussion, or if you don't say anything, we'll assume that it just comes back for the Tuesday legislative session.
So, discussion.
Well, I think, if I may, I think there's two ways to approach it. There's one, the traditional way of having it open on Monday, and the other way, we could have it on Tuesday and work with the chair to make sure public comments would be welcomed, although we wouldn't have the same amount of responsive time in case we wanted to amend anything. So, I think Monday night is a little cleaner, but I think both ways could work.
Okay, so, at this point, Councilmember Weld, are you okay with it, having the opportunity for a Monday hearing and a Tuesday vote, similar to the Councilmember Emmanuel's suggestion?
That, that was my.
Okay.
Hope, yeah.
Okay.
So, I have a clear understanding now.
So, we're postponing it to the second, this motion is to postpone to the second meeting in October, and to include a Monday night public hearing opportunity, if folks want to come down to speak on it, and a Tuesday vote. Other further comments on this? Seeing, oh, Councilmember Beaton.
Thank you. I, I'm excited to look into this a little bit more. It seems like we have a rare opportunity to, you know, make a decision for the neighbors and the business that are, are going to be kind of beneficial for everybody, so I'm excited to see what happens.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I, you know, I appreciate this motion going, being proposed here. I, I do plan to support it, because I think not only are there a number of discussions that need to occur with regard to Briggs Avenue and the potential parking area, but I think, I'd like some way for us to look a little bit more comprehensively at the, at that area, and look at Tobin Street as well as the frontage road to see if maybe there, if we would want to see some restrictions in that area, too, because we did hear from, from Mr. King that, you know, that, that Tobin Street was in fact even impassable, you know, during certain times of the day. So, there may be ways for us to, to add some, some benefit to the whole neighborhood in that, in that regard, but also to maybe clarify what the parking restrictions may be on the, on the frontage road, because I'm not sure that there are signs on it, or indicating that it is too narrow for, for that type of parking. So, I'm hoping staff would be able to look at some of the neighboring streets and issues as part of this, this whole discussion, and I'm not sure if that's, really needs to be part of the motion necessarily. I think maybe it is understood that, that we want to solve this problem comprehensively, and rather than just do one or two things, we may, may want to, might want to do three or four things along the way. So, that's just, that, that could ultimately result, I suppose, in a separate, you know, ordinance change with regard to parking on, on Tobin Street, for example, that would come maybe at the same time. But I guess I, I just wanted to express that I'm open to those kind of ways of looking at this, this problem.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Further comments before we take a vote on the motion to postpone to our second meeting in October? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Emmanuel.
Aye.
Greggert.
Aye.
And that motion passes, and we'll see that restriction brought back in our second meeting in October. We move then to, our ordinance is for introduction. Item number 35 is an ordinance, rezoning copy located at 3145 North Hastings Way, from R1 to R3, and R3 to R2. Do I hear any desire to bring that forward at this time? No such desire? We'll move then to our second ordinance for introduction, which is an annexation. Item number 36 is an ordinance that would, in accordance with Section 660217 of the Wisconsin statutes, annex, annexing to the City of Eau Claire, and particularly to the 14th Assessment Ward in the 4th Aldermanic District, being a part of the southeast quarter of the south, sorry, the southeast quarter, the southeast quarter of Section 102710, town viewing Eau Claire County, as shown on a planning drawing, number 18-2A, also known as the Mogentown Petition. Pro Wisconsin statutes, this annexation ordinance required, will require two-thirds vote, which is eight out of 11 elected members required for adoption at that time. Is there a interest to see that ordinance moved? Seeing none. We will then move to our next item of business, which is council discussion, item number 37, which is council discussion around building relationships between staff and the city council. And for this, I would actually like to ask if Councilmember Emmanuel could be the one to facilitate this discussion. And she's put a number of background documents as well into our packets, which hopefully you've had a chance to look over. But I'll hand it over to you, Councilmember, to lead this.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. If I could ask, perhaps, the city clerk to set the timer for 20 minutes. We have in here that we're going to keep it to under 20, and if we need to revisit that, we can. Thank you to our city manager and to Acting President Worthman for helping to place us on the agenda. There's, I guess, two reasons why I think this is important for us to talk about, and why I thought this was important to spend a little bit of time on, is one, this message I keep saying, "We're new here." It's true, we're new here, and, and individually, I've heard some chatter on just kind of, there's a lot of information to take in, and kind of, how do you, you know, build relationships with staff and get to know the issues, et cetera? And it seemed that there was enough interest that merited to have a group discussion about it. Because of the sunshine laws, we couldn't have a bunch of little side conversations on this, so this is really the cleanest way to do that. But even more than that procedure, I, I really do believe in trust-based relationships. And that's how you get stuff done, is because you have trust. And we are tasked to be leaders, and so really to have trust-based leadership as well in addition to relationships. And the makeup of the newer body is, a lot of community organizers, people who know how to do relationship building, one-on-ones, and that's a, a little bit of a paradigm shift from maybe what our city's been used to, and not putting a judgment on good or bad. It's, it's a shift, and so how do we operate now in our new normal together? So, there's been other communities who have looked at kind of setting some. So there's been other communities who have looked at kind of setting some parameters or guidelines around building those intentional relationships with staff. And I think it's helpful for all of us, including myself, to really have those bright lines on what that looks like. So in creating this opportunity for conversation, I've asked folks to consider three things, so a little prep work before the meeting, and then we'll have our discussion, and then there's some follow-up after discussion. So I'll just go through that very briefly, and then we'll, we'll get to discussing. So you've had materials to review, I won't spend any time on that. There are a series of, I think, six questions that are laid out here, and councilmembers don't have to answer the questions. They are really marked out there to help gauge interest or elicit contributions from councilmembers, but you don't have to answer any or all of them. We're just having a conversation, so we can call each other by the first name and try that out. And then I have in here to see if anybody needs to have like a quick ten, five, ten-minute break, but it looks like folks are taking one on their own if they need to. So maybe just by a knot of heads, is it okay if we keep going?
Yep.
Yep, okay, great. And then what we'll do is I'll invite councilmembers to offer part of a conversation with each question that's outlined in our packet, and then we'll take notes on that. And I can go back and watch our recording of this to capture any additional notes. And really, this is an opportunity for us to have a discussion, and this information helps to inform the city manager on helping us start to navigate those new, new relationships in our new normal. So again, this is a twenty-minute conversation. I won't necessarily call on people to talk, it's, we're just chatting. Okay? Any questions before I get started, or we get started?
No, if I could just make a note though, Councilmember, is that we are, I believe, up against a six-thirty deadline, and so this is a perfect amount of time, just in case you're aware as well.
Good, thank you so much. Okay. If it seems that we do need more time, we do have it built into our model that we can ask ourselves for more time, and we could potentially, we'll cross that bridge, but I bet we're going to be tidy on this one. So without further ado, I'll just open up the floor and start with the first question, and that is for you, if any, what is the function, significance, and/or value of council building a relationship with staff members? And perhaps we can just have all the lights on, since we're not going to call on each other.
Sure, that's great.
I can say something. Thanks for bringing this up. I think as a new person, it's helpful to have an intentional time to think about how to move forward together. And for me, learning is kind of the key to thinking about relationship building and sort of figuring out ways to encounter each other with curiosity, in the sense that when I talk with staff, I meet people who have so much expertise that I don't have. And at the same time, I think all those of us who are elected bring perspectives, you know, that voters valued, that staff might also need to know. So we're all so busy, but having time to spend in curiosity and getting to know each other and what we can learn from each other is something that's important to me.
Thank you. Further, further thoughts on this question from Councilmember Emanuel?
I, I think entering public service is really surprising in some ways. And to be learning the ropes while at the same time you're dealing with very professional people who know their area very well. I mean, we are so fortunate to have the skilled staff that we do. I find it a little difficult to try and build those relationships on my own. Do you go in and do one-on-ones, which seem like is a very poor use of people's times? But otherwise, how do you really get to know the depth of, of the staff and what they do and what our programs are? So it seems like the city would probably benefit from being a little bit more planned in how new councilmembers are oriented to staff and to the relationships that you can build. I, yeah, I expected there to be a little bit more formal ways of, here's how you get to know, here's a tour of that, and that, that's a little bit more independent than I expected it to be.
Thank you. Apologies, I wasn't here for the entire conversation, so this may have been raised already, but if it was, I'd like to add to the sentiment that I think that opportunities for councilmembers, as well as councilmembers and staff, to just have informal, non-policy-related socialization time can be really helpful. Moments where we're not doing business together, but we can build rapport and build relationships. In my day job, I, we, that's the number one most important thing that we do, is build relationships with people in the community, and it really, I've, I've seen how it can build bridges in moments of challenging policy work. And so I think opening opportunities for, for, just for us to be friends would be nice. So.
Yeah, I feel that, you know, I was able to have the opportunity to go to the open house for the new fire station tent on Friday, and that, that's sort of an example of where you have, you have some time to explore and learn about the city, but you also get to, to learn from staff and also share, share important moments together, and I think, and also with the public, really. So finding those opportunities that, that we can, you know, maybe it's celebrating an accomplishment, or maybe it's trying to, to work through a difficult decision where we're maybe out in a, maybe we're out in Princeton Valley together, or trying to walk a new trail together. You know, there's different types of outings that I think could, could, could really bring us together on, on, you know, realizing what major solutions we could find. You know, I mentioned earlier the Harding Avenue Hill walking tours too, and, you know, those, when we have these big decisions coming up, like street projects, we're often making those decisions in the middle of winter, when everything's covered in snow, and maybe people aren't as, as able or willing or to be able to get out there and really look at, at what decision is in front of us. Or maybe the snow is simply making it impossible to see, see what the situation is. And maybe we could think about more opportunities to, to, you know, to work with staff on, on what's happening on the ground in the community outside of these meeting rooms. But also really the social aspect, I think, is important, so maybe if we don't have to have all of them be all about some, something we're grappling with, but rather an opportunity to, to get to know each other more personally. So I'm just, I'm pretty open to that, and I, my flexible schedule during the day allows me to, to have that attitude too, which I know isn't necessarily shared by everybody in, in terms of that possibility, but I think it's, I'm kind of open to, to those, to the ideas that people have, whether it be staff or councilmembers or, or the public or a business that wants to show us a good thing that's happening, so.
Thank you.
I'd also want to echo a little bit, now we all came from different perspectives, different diversities, and my son, as we're talking, someone quiet, someone listen. Because we are, we are in a different perspective, different, come from different way, but we are, we are have the knowledge and what we need to do here. I mean, we are considered professional, what we did, or what we do. And I, I myself, and I know a couple of councilmen, I'm feeling, feel we're back in town. I know we have a good time to chat, not anything related to what we did here, but just about what out there, what you do, hobby, what you like, activity, bike riding, all this stuff, it's kind sort of get to know your people, get to know other. I mean, I, I like how we should do, how we should have that little time, spend together, social time, have some little talk, I think it'd be worth the time to get to know other people, I mean, others, councils or staff. I mean, sometimes for me, it's kind of hard, because I have all the job, but I mean, I'm hoping that we can accommodate something, something that we can either walk in somewhere, or walk in a park, or do something that we all can have fun, and instead working and here, but something out there.
I guess I, I would be excited about the socializing part of the suggestions and the comments that have been made, not only the interaction between us and staff, but I think some of these events can be an opportunity for the community to socialize with us too. They read about us, they, they listen to us, but a lot of them don't really know us. So, you know, we, Councilmember Beaton and I, you know, were talking about some other projects earlier, and, you know, I mentioned when the books on the bus thing started, you know, I thought that would have been a fun idea, we're all councilmembers, took a chance to ride the bus and maybe read books to kids, or, or at least just be on the bus, you know, maybe we're all on a different bus. I, I think, I think little events like that, that we could do. On the other same side, I, I respect that staff has, has a busy day and a full agenda, and they have tasks and they have expectations that they're, that we've asked them to meet, and our city managers asked them to meet, department heads have asked them to meet. So to ask them to set aside a half a day, you know, to, to do these things, or to take the time to walk us through is, you know, I, I, I respect that, and I appreciate the fact that that's asking a lot of them. But I, and it's a lot for us too. I think we, we do load a lot of expectations on ourselves for time, and it gets harder and harder to meet, meet everything that we, that we want to do, but I think there's a little opportunity there that maybe we can take advantage of, that can, can all interact maybe together with.
Well, I'll say something, I guess, I agree with everything that's being said here with my colleagues, I don't know if it would affect you, Jill. I think socialization is very important among the council, and then among, I think your point, Terry, about with the public too, it's a fantastic idea, and then with city staff as well, building those relationships and the trust. I just want to echo what Jill was saying, that as we started, I guess I agree with what you said, it did feel very independent, and I, I mean, you know, city manager was definitely there and very helpful, and always, and people offered tours, but there's just a lot to walk into. Now, I was, I moved around a lot growing up, about every three years, I'm used to being the new kid, so maybe that helped, you know, kind of roll with it. But yeah, I just, I really hear what you said, Jill, and I agree, and, yeah, and I look forward to hopefully more of those opportunities. But again, like what Terry was saying about, I know everyone is busy, and that just brings up another, so I'll just self-disclose here, that I feel that struggle between trying to meet my constituents' needs, like I know they want things done, but also the limited resources of city staff that I know is very real, and so trying to, because I feel, feel bad, you know, like putting too much on, you know, city staff, and, but at the same time, I want to do a good job with my constituents too, I take that very seriously. So that's just kind of where I'm at. I don't know if that fit with this discussion or not, but there it is, so.
Dave, did you want to share anything?
I don't want to get to meet any of you. Catherine, I knew you were going to do that, so. I missed the question, but I, I'm getting the gist of it. You know, I'm, I'm here to do a job, and, and I, I think what everybody's saying is great, and I do think we do get to know each other through all our interactions, we have coffee with each other, we call each other. You can't get together more than two people, because it's, it's against the rules. Staff, we're all very busy, I mean, extremely busy, we have a lot of meetings. You know, we have the strategic planning meeting on a weekend, which, you know, was difficult, but again, it's work. So could we have an activity or two a year that would be maybe something we could do, like an express game, I think? Would be something that's kind of a little bit longer term, and yet fun, and the public would be there as well? I could see something like that. That would be sort of a beer.
Less than four.
And, you know, I, I mean, yeah, so I, I think there's probably some opportunities for stuff like that, but, but, you know, otherwise it's difficult for more than two of us to get together.
Thank you. So I'm looking at time, we're getting close to our time, so I guess what I would ask is maybe through a knot of heads or very brief discussion, could I, would I have our body's support to put this into a survey form? And then if people want to contribute their answers, I can make it so it's populated easy for the city manager to see. And then if anybody feels really strongly that we need to have another big group discussion, we could, but otherwise, I think this gives a good flavor. So is that okay with everybody, if we move it to electronic communication for the rest of it? And then.
Is that something, we'll run into a problem with communicating back and forth to each other, should we let somebody from staff do that? I guess, how would we do that without running and following the, the rules?
I could make sure that it follows within the rules, and, so I'll make sure that it does that. Thank you. So we've got two minutes left, and I guess sometimes that when people have group discussions, they'll end it with just a one word or a brief statement, so I don't feel like I need to say anything else other than thank you for opening the door together to just kind of dive in and authentically lead together. So, does anybody else have any, anything they'd like to add?
I can say something. Yeah, I, I like this opportunity to have conversation in a more informal way. So thanks for starting the conversation.
I think it is the first step, and I think we're, we're going good. I mean, I'm really hoping that we can continue with this process.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Emanuel, for, for helping to facilitate this, step one, learning experience in Iowa. Close calls. Okay. So thank you again, council, for, for that discussion, and we'll then move on to our next item. Yeah, the announcements, announcements by city manager and city council. City manager?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. And not really an announcement, but just know that, thank you and appreciative of the conversation and the input. It was a good conversation, and, you know, please know that when I speak on behalf of the staff, that we, we share many of those sentiments about wanting to have a high-quality, you know, working relationship, built on trust, and, and one that is, you know, where we're sharing information. And for some of you that have been around a little longer, you know that in the last year, we actually tried a couple of social activities, which was a little new, you know, and we had some time, and so I appreciate that feedback and, and a good input, so thank you. In terms of formal announcements, we do have a CIP work session following the meeting tonight, where we talk about a few wrap-up sessions on the, on the CIP, as well as the library. Then if you have time, interest, and still an appetite for more meetings, there is an ideal lounge to talk about opportunity zones, and that's at the RCU Community Room from seven to eight-thirty tonight, so you can continue on your evening. But the opportunity zones are, pardon the pun, but an exciting opportunity for our community, and we're looking forward to figuring out how we can utilize them in the community. Then continuing on Wednesday is the Chamber Business Hall of Fame luncheon, and then on Friday is the Chambers Eggs and Issues. And if you want to attend either of those, there's still time, and let Kathy know. That's all I have for announcements.
Thank you. Thank you, city manager Peters. Are there any announcements from council at this time? Councilmember McGregor?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I did want to remind our live viewing audience and anyone in the room as well, that it is an election day today for the partisan primaries. The polls close at eight o'clock, so you have about an hour and a half.
Thank you. Further announcements from council? Seeing none, we will then on a motion by Councilmember Emanuel, second. Seeing none, we will then, on a motion by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Weld, adjourn this meeting without anyone's opposition.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912, or TDD 715-839-1689, or write, Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.